Good evening, good evening, everyone. All right, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, May 25th. We got a lot of folks here, my only request of you so far is if you have a cell phone, if you had silenced it. I don't need all those ringtones. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Colodey.
President.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to begin, as we do with every meeting, with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance over here, if you'd join me in standing for those two items.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. And Lord, we just ask that you bring peace, compassion, and understanding in this arena tonight to make, help us to make the right decisions for our great city. We thank you, Father, for all things. In Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, in the business for liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item, approval of the agenda. I've got one suggested change if the Commission would be okay with it. I have a feeling that there's a lot of folks here, just by talking to some folks before the meeting, for Item 8A and 8B. So if it would be the Commission's pleasure, I would suggest, let's get through announcements and presentations, let's get through the consent agenda and public participation, and then hear that item, Item 8A and 8B, hear those right after the consent agenda. Any concerns with that change of business? All right, hearing none, so if you all caught that, I'm going to talk more about public participation in a minute, but we're going to move up Item 8A and 8B related to the homeless. We're going to move that up in the agenda to right after the consent agenda. And Colodey, I think you had one other change.
Yeah, I have one item, Item 6E, that is, consider the approval of Economic Development Business Retention and Expansion Memorandum of Understanding between the City of New Smyrna Beach and Volusia County Government. That is to continue to meeting in June 22nd, please.
Okay, so Item 6E is going to be continued to another meeting. All right, no other changes to the agenda?
Just one for the audience, park rule changes to the Turnbull Sports Complex will also be considered under City Manager's report.
What was that?
Park rules, the park rules for the sports complex.
The park rules changes.
It's under City Manager's report, all right, which is at the Item 12. Okay, first up, we have an oath of office. Mr. Davenport, if you'd join me here. So we have Buddy, most of you know Buddy Davenport. He was appointed by the Governor, and I didn't know anything about it. I guess you know the Governor more than I do, so he's appointed by the Governor to the Find Board, representing all of us here in Volusia County, but especially in New Smyrna, don't forget New Smyrna now. All right, so I got an oath of office we're going to administer for you here, so if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me on this. I, James Buddy Davenport.
James Buddy Davenport.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
Citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And being appointed by the Governor of Florida.
And being appointed by the Governor of Florida.
To serve as the Volusia County Florida Inland Navigation District Commissioner.
To serve as the Find Commissioner.
There you go, we'll take it. Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do.
And the Constitution of the state of Florida, you've got to repeat that.
And the state of Florida.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Volusia County Find District.
I will faithfully perform the duties of the Find District.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, appreciate it, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, next up, we have a brief presentation by our Neighborhood Council Chair, Mr. Herman, if you would come forward and give an annual report for us.
Randy Herman, Chair of the Neighborhood Council. Gives me a great pleasure to present tonight to the Mayor and the City Commission, city staff, and the citizens at this meeting, and I understand it needs to be brief, so I will try to hold to that. This is the, as far as I know, the first time the boards and commissions in our city have had annual evaluations required, and I'm the first one up to do that, so I hope I will do justice to the process, because I do think it's an important one, and I hope it will be a valuable one for all of you, because we all serve at the behest of you, the City Commission, and I hope this process will indeed be beneficial. It certainly has been beneficial for the Neighborhood Council. Second, just want to comment, the freedom to congregate is something that we've all been challenged with this last year and a half with COVID, and tonight, seeing that we have less masks and a little bit closer space, does acknowledge that things are changing, but that it's been a tough year in a variety of ways, and some of that has played out, of course, on how the commissions and boards have operated in our city. The question, when you start to evaluate, reminds me of a quick story about the man that was approaching a Greek monastery that was high on a mountain, and he realized that to get to the monastery, he was going to have to be in a basket, and the basket was on a rope that went up to the monastery. He became quite nervous about that, and he said to the monk, "How often is this rope replaced?" And the monk said, "Every time it breaks." So, a little humor there. But when we get into evaluation, you know, when along the line do we look at fixing the rope? So we had a very thorough discussion last night at the Neighborhood Council meeting about the role of the Neighborhood Council. You all have in your packets my original report, and I've also attached an addendum to summarize what happened last night, which was, which came after the report I gave to you. One of the major issues was, how can the mission of increased citizen access and participation in the Neighborhood Council best be accomplished? And it brings up some major questions about what is a neighborhood? It's a very amorphous term. How do we define it? In our city, we define it as 24 units. Is that the best way to go forward? Does it really represent what's out there and how people see themselves in our neighborhoods and city? And what's the cost benefit of the Neighborhood Council for the city, for the staff, and for the citizens? And all those questions came up as we discussed the role. And they came up with six recommendations that I hope will assist in looking forward to as the future of the Neighborhood Council. The major question was, should we sunset? Does a commission or board reach a point which is no longer beneficial? And that was a heavy question before all of us. The debate resulted in the following six. One, to continue as a council, not to sunset. To change from monthly to every other month meetings. To improve messaging and outreach. To have the zone reps confer with the commissioners before each meeting to help assist in the agenda setting. It was important to note that the members did not in any way want the Neighborhood Council to be seen as a barrier to communication directly to the city commissioners and to the staff that are available in many ways. And it does beg a question, as a town the size of New Smyrna, do we need a Neighborhood Council, because we do have fairly good access? I would say, when it was started in 2013, the access wasn't as good, and I really want to acknowledge, and the Neighborhood Council wants to acknowledge, the work that this Commission has done in increasing participation through workshops, et cetera. So that's another question, do we need it? And if so, what's the value? And certainly, we know currently, the value of citizen participation is under question. Nationally, statewide, we're seeing citizen participation being questioned, voter registration being questioned, all kinds of things. So there is an argument that we do indeed need a specific body that says we're here for access. So the last two are, the Neighborhood Council would like to actively participate in annual zone meetings, and they would like the Chair to report recommendations, when they have them, directly to the City Commission. I hope this evaluation process is helpful in discerning the future of all our boards and commissions, and I hope my report specifically to the Neighborhood Council will assist you in that process. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, I shared with Randy before, just at a deference for the rather packed agenda tonight, my thought was, we could take this, digest it along with the report provided, get some individual feedback, and then no doubt we'll have other feedback, because we have more of these, but for tonight, I'd like to just move on if everyone's okay with that.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mark is next up, Hilltop Securities.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mark Galvin with Hilltop Securities. Back before you is about a year ago, when we started looking at basically both the FDOT type of improved transportation improvements and also some FEMA improvements. And we've completed the FDOT financing already, now we're looking at doing, moving forward with the flood mitigation projects. The difference between those two deals, if we, when we finance it, because these are benefiting individual property owners, any type of financing will be taxable, so it's a separate financing. As far as the presentation is concerned, we've estimated it at about $8.2 million. This takes into account some contingencies. The only dollar amount that I think that is pretty close to being locked in is Phase 1. We see the whole thing being done in three phases, Phase 1, nine homes, Phase 2, four, and 17. Here is a summary as it relates to who's going to be paying what, is it's estimated that about $5.1 million will be paid for FEMA, the city will contribute a million, and then the beneficiary property owners will be assessed for a little over $2.1, right around $2.1 million. Once again, these are just estimated numbers with some contingencies. The question then becomes, if you decide to move forward with it, how to finance it. And just like what we did before on the transportation-related projects, is that we would recommend, especially with the construction and getting the FEMA money, that we do this as a line of credit again, because especially as it relates to the Phase 2 and 3, they're going to be down, a little bit down the pike. So why pay for all that money sitting into a pot when you're sure not, you're not locked into the construction? So what you would do is you do a line of credit, you would move forward with the first phase, and then when Phase 2 and 3 are ready, you'll go ahead and start construction, and hopefully be able, the assessments will be locked in, and so will the FEMA monies will start coming in a little after they are completed. So once again, this would be the exact type of deal, but the difference would end up being taxable. I've kind of moved along pretty quickly on that, because I know you've got a lot on the agenda. The one thing I would like to point out is that one of the things that was brought to my attention is that the city might have additional tax-exempt capital needs that they might look at want to finance. One is the maintenance operation, solar panels, and the improvements to the women's club. If the city decides that they want to move forward with those, I have talked to Regions Bank, they are willing to extend that line of credit that we just did by another million dollars, so we could go ahead and just slip that right into that project, and then once the line of credit is complete in three years, then we'd go ahead and just take that as part of a long-term financing. So once, so that's the presentation in a nutshell. I'll answer any questions or take any feedback.
Okay, so we're not really taking any action tonight, just so we're clear, this is more of just updating us on the process. The bulk of that is this FEMA process that, you know, we're on the tail end of a many, many months and years process at this point, so any questions or comments of Mark by the Commissioner, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, why do Phases 2 and 3 include a 30% contingency over the 15% in Phase 1?
Okay, it's my understanding, Phase 1, you really already have construction bids already been received, and then they just built in 15%, just to be able to cover any unforeseen. Phase 2 and 3, you haven't bid them out yet, so those are just fairly, my understanding, they're not recent estimates, so therefore, to be conservative, they built in 30,000, I mean 30% on those. Hopefully, they'll come in lower, they could go in higher.
Okay, thank you.
With what construction prices have done, 30% is probably not, probably not enough at this point.
Yep.
Yes, sorry.
Mark, on that issue, we've bid them out, but that was a long time ago, it's going to be a while before they actually start construction. From when they last bidded that, to when they actually start construction, the cost of construction has increased immensely. So what exactly happens with that first phase that was already bid out previously before all these tremendous increases?
I could, I could answer this question, Commissioner. The contractor is holding the price that we, that they had to bid in January, so they're ready to go as soon as we get this project approved.
That contractor is holding the bids from January?
That's what he indicated to the staff, so.
Thank you.
We should get that in, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So what's the length of, on the process?
The length of the process for the construction or for the financing?
For the financing part, because we already have the contractor who's waiting to start the project, so.
Well, I mean, I've set the financing up for about, to be a three-year financing, because you have one that you're ready, you'll be ready to start fairly quickly, and you'll want to move forward with it. The other two, as far as you're going to have to bid it out, you're going to have to go through the assessment process and everything, so all this does is allow you to go ahead and to move forward with those projects when you're ready. Realistically, I have a feeling that by the time you get your FEMA money, we're going to roll this thing over again, but the idea here is to get you sufficient funds to be able to start the project.
But my question, are we going to have to go out for RFP again for another line of credit?
That's why I'm doing for the 8.5 million.
Yes.
I'm just, we're just ballparking that amount, so the answer to that is that hopefully they, it falls within that amount. I would like to know a little bit closer before the RFP is finally approved and brought to your attention, that we might have a little bit better cost estimate, but once again, this is just the preliminary.
Um, yes.
Yeah, so at this point in time, we haven't even gone out for RFP, so it's going to be a couple of months probably before.
Yes, I would, I would say so. You'll have the pleasure of seeing me back a couple more times.
Okay. I'm just, we're in the middle of the budget process now, so, you know, we have some preliminary things going on, but by July or August, we should know better, so it just, you know, would help with knowing exactly where we are on our regular budget, you know, our general budget, as opposed to going out and doing stuff like this.
And if you decide to do those other projects that we were talking about, that could be done relatively short period of time, because if you guys approve those projects, because the line's already in place, we just have to modify it and bring it back for your approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? All right.
Mayor, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thanks for coming out. Okay, that is all of the presentations. The next item up is public participation. That being said, let me clarify something. We're going to hear Item 8A and B, which is related to the homeless issue, which I think many of you are here for. We're going to hear that item just after we cover public participation and consent agenda. You will have a chance to speak to that item during that discussion. So if you want to speak to any other thing on the agenda or some other issue that you came to speak to tonight, now is your chance. If you want to speak to that issue specifically, if you would, do me a favor and wait for that time when we're talking about that topic. It just helps us stay on track and on point. So this is your time for all other public participation. My request now, and I'll remind you again later, is I just ask for professionalism and respectfulness. We've got varying opinions and views here, varying issues, you know, if we can avoid cheering, booing, those kind of things, I'd be forever grateful for you. So with that, public participation. Yes, sir, come right ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Elena Dumay, and I'm here with some fellow members of our New Smyrna Beach High School SWAT organization, and SWAT stands for Students Working Against Tobacco. Today, we are here to present to you on what Students Working Against Tobacco is, what we do as SWAT, and what we would, what we would like to move further in doing. SWAT is a statewide organization of youth working to mobilize, educate, and equip Florida youth to revolt against indie glamorized big tobacco companies. We have a group of students in every county working to put an end to the addictions, usage, and consequences of nicotine and tobacco, especially when it comes to adolescents. We work to challenge and go after aspects of smoking, such as selling, retail advertising, secondhand smoking, smoking with a minor, smoking in housing, and underage use of products.
Hi, my name's Jace, I'm also a part of SWAT at New Smyrna Beach High School, and to carry on what she said, SWAT members work to create ordinances and present them to lawmakers to take legal action in taking down big tobacco and nicotine companies by going county to county and speaking and gaining support from groups such as today's council meeting. We host many community and school events, such as Not a Lab Rat Day, Tobacco and Nicotine Prevention Weeks, and conduct education training to students and faculty in schools across the state. We also do our part in educating our community in the process and consequences of using tobacco and nicotine products. The vaping and smoking epidemic in minors have become a huge part in our generation's society, and is something we see on a daily basis, which is one of the reasons we, as an organization, do what we can to prevent and put an end to these dangerous habits.
Hello, my name is Bradley Sukumsky, and I'm also part of the SWAT. Nicotine and tobacco are highly addictive substances that simulate part of the brain and responsible for sensation reward and mood elevations. With chronic smoking, neurons in your brain become desensitized, which reinforces the addiction and inducing cravings. Nicotine and tobacco can lead to severe problems as the addiction progresses, including issues such as smoking at an early age, which has been linked to problems with working, memory, attention, and eventually lead to impaired cognitive function later in life. Tobacco and nicotine use in adolescents is also associated with later development in major depressive disorders, agoraphobia, panic disorders, further addiction, antisocial personality disorders, and academic problems. Thank you so much again for allowing our SWAT community to present about our organization and mission, and hopes to make a difference in New Smyrna Beach, Florida.
Thank you. Thank you all for what you're doing out there in the school to raise awareness on this, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. That's right. That is a great time to clap, right after I tell you not to, then they come up, and you did the right thing, thank you. Yes, ma'am, come right ahead.
Okay, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Shannon, and I am a New Smyrna Beach local, and I'm here representing the Southeast Volusia Audubon Society. And I'm here to ask you guys for your support.
Talking to that mic so they can hear you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm here to ask you for your support with our environmental mission. As we all know, that development within central Florida is kind of running rampant right now, but our mission is not necessarily to stop such development, but rather incentivize a way of developing more intentionally. It is our goal to work with these developers and local landowners in specifically landscaping. Right now, as it stands, manicured landscaping, that is the most common form of landscaping that we use, serves to produce spaces that are ecologically dead and functionless. And there is a really easy remedy to this situation, and it's simply planting plants that are native to our region. By simply planting natives, we can provide food and shelter to our local wildlife. And it is our organization's mission to hopefully convince landowners, and I include all of you guys, to plant enough native plants throughout our community that we can create a sort of green space corridor that will lessen the effects of habitat fragmentation. I'm not here to ask you guys to spend money, I'm actually asking for your permission for us to spend money as an organization. We already have community partners, and we have grant opportunities that would allow us to revitalize New Smyrna Beach's public lands in a way that will hopefully inspire the community, but it will also reinforce New Smyrna Beach's legacy as an ecotourism destination. And it will also reinforce our commitment as a community to being a ecologically conscious city. So yeah, like I said, I am kind of asking you guys for permission for us to plant native plants on public lands. I would love to talk more about this with each of you, but yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for reaching out, and if you'll leave, Brian, do you have a card over there handy? If you'll grab a card from Brian, and he'll tell you how to get ahold of us, and I'd love to talk to you more, and I'm sure that my colleagues would as well. Yes, ma'am.
I am going to request that the Commission remind people to use the microphone. People all the way in the back can't even hear what's being said up here, let alone anybody who may be listening online, so hope you'll remind people about the microphone.
Literally just it. All right, others for public participation, and again, the homeless issue, we're going to hear from later, this is for anything else. Others for public participation. Seeing none, we will close this portion of public participation. Next item is the consent agenda. There are, gentlemen, 10 items, remember, 6E has been removed. There are 10 items on the consent agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to pull anything? We'll begin with Commissioner Colodey, what item?
6B.
B?
B as in boy. And 6G.
B and G. Okay, Vice Mayor Sacks, anything to pull?
For your pleasure, I have nothing to pull.
Commissioner.
No, Mayor.
Commissioner Hartman.
6G also.
6G for Hartman as well. Okay, do I have a motion from the Commission to approve the consent agenda excluding Items B, E, which was pulled, and G?
So move.
Second.
City, Assistant City Clerk, sorry, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
Yes. All right, Item 6B, Commissioner Colodey.
When I was reviewing the agenda and all the items, this one is one of the ones that I couldn't quite figure out, and I need a presentation to explain what the general basis of it is. I know some of it's purely bookkeeping, but some of it are pretty big numbers.
So do you have particular question, or you want me meet with you separately?
No, you don't have to go through each item, but if you could give me a general idea as to why we're doing this major change, and if there are any major components of it that are unexpected, if you want to use a term like that.
Okay, so basically, what we do is very regular process. Normally, twice a year, we come to the Commission and ask you for, you know, for amendment. So in other words, basically true up or clear up items. So if we receive some revenue, let's say we got some grants, which were not budgeted, so that would be those items, and again, we have to work through all the revenues and expenditures. So we go line by line and see where we have to adjust, so to be along with the actual amounts. Again, it's very normal process for any municipality, state, county. Normally, we do twice a year, we do mid-year, and then after close, which is September 30th.
Okay, very good. So if we start to stray too far in any particular budget areas, this would point it out to us, and we could make corrections if we found that appropriate.
Exactly. It's basically notify you elected officials that where we're at, what items being looked at, and why, and most of them already been approved by you. It's just more of a, those items were submitted without budget amendment, and we by statute and by our ordinance require come to you, back to you, with those items.
Good, I'm glad to see you're doing that, and I would love to do it now, as opposed to later, when it gets to the end of the budget year and becomes a little more of a panic-type item.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve Item 6B?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
City Clerk, Assistant Sharon, sorry.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
Yes. And Item 6G, I'll come to Commissioner Hartman first, you also wanted to pull it, we'll come to Commissioner Colodey.
So I have a couple of issues with this item, the first being is that we just had a presentation from the Capital Improvements Coordinator, and this wasn't a part of her mini-budget process. I'm not comfortable doing it in a consensus agenda item. I think that this item, any other new personnel that Any other new personnel that we're looking to add next year is done through the annual budget process. I feel much more comfortable if it was done in that venue instead of this. I don't think the need is to do it right away in an emergency. And the data that we got possibly was going to be funded out of the reserve account, which I also am not in support of whatsoever. So I think this item should be done through the regular budget process, like we've done all other new positions, and then will give us a chance to review it and carry on from there.
Okay. Commissioner Colodey, you also wanted to pull this. Go ahead.
Well, it's for the same basic reason. We do try to plan ahead, so there's no surprises. I would be pleased to consider this for our next budget year and not for this year. Also, when I was reviewing the job standards and what they are expected to do, everything in there was fine. But as I've said in the past, we really need to have a person who focuses on grants. And I think this might be based upon the capital improvement projects. Have somebody there so that we can keep our overall expenses down by gathering as much money, let's say, from the Audubon Society, who has offered some help. So there are so many groups out there that we can't think of up here that could conceivably help us and pay and improve some of the things we do. So I would like to see that included in the job description also.
Okay. Kyle, do you want to speak to this?
That's fine. I think what we'll do is we'll come back and probably put it in fiscal year 21, '22. And also, we'll include as part of the job description as a grant rider as well.
Yeah, I don't want to imply that we're not applying for all the grants that we have, but sometimes the things we apply for are directly associated with projects we want to do. We don't know if there's other monies out there that could really help us do something beneficial.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I can support delaying it. I could also support doing it now. We looked at a list of, you know, four pages worth of projects that are in motion that we got, you know, one or two people, really one trying to run hurdles. So I think probably further discussion on whether or not grant-riding quite aligns with that position. I get what you mean. There's probably some overlap, those two positions. Make sure to communicate, but I'm not sure... Yeah, I think we've had lengthy discussions on the grant-rider position, so I just think we can talk about that more. We don't have to decide that tonight, so... All right, I'm not hearing a strong desire from anyone to push forward with item six G, so we'll just let that one die and bring that back in part of the 2021, '22 budget. Okay, that wraps up the consent agenda.
So for purposes of the minutes, the city manager withdrew item six G? Withdrawn? Withdrawn by city staff? We need something for the minutes, so...
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
Okay. Next item up. May interest some of you. Item 8A. Ordinance 1921 is a second reading of public hearing and ordinance, which would modify the list of permitted uses in the I-2 heavy industrial zoning to permit temporary housing facilities as part of government-owned and/or operated facilities. The city attorney will read this a second time by title only, and then we'll talk about how this is going to work tonight.
Ordinance number 1921, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article 5, Zoning Districts, Section 50402, specific regulations by district, I-2, Heavy Industrial Zoning District, to permit temporary housing facilities on government-owned and/or operated facilities, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 2421, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article 2, Definitions, Section 201, General Definitions, to add temporary housing facility, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All right. So as you heard, Carrie read both item 8A and 8B. We're going to have to vote on them separately, but for consideration purposes, really, the two are inextricably linked, so we're just going to talk about them kind of as one item. But of course, we'll consider them separately. How this is going to go, we're going to hear first from the city, city staff is going to give some thoughts and any presentation they have. I'll have the commission, if they desire, make any kind of opening comments or, you know, speak to the issue. We'll hear from the public then. It'll be a public hearing, and we'll talk about that when we open that up. And then we'll close the public hearing, have final comments from the commission, and whatever the commission's pleasure is to move forward there. So we'll do that on 8A. And then hopefully, basically, we'll just follow the same process for 8B, but much abbreviated would be the hope, because really, the two, again, are one in the same, so... With that, Colodey?
Mayor, before we start, I have received quite a few phone calls and emails from neighbors and residents around the site of the one industrial, even though it's not the selected site at this point. But because of the concerns of the citizens, and we want to be sensitive to that, my recommendation is you could approve or look into ordinance 2421. That is just looks at the definition. But ordinance 1921, which is... That's to add to the list of permitted use. My recommendation is to continue that item to September, October. You could listen to their concerns, and I'm sure that you have received the same emails and the same phone calls that I received. So with that, I just... My recommendation is to continue that one item, which is 1921, to September, October. This way, we could come back with some other suggested sites for you.
So let's pause there, gentlemen. So we've got, again, two items, but let's focus on 1921. So that's the permitted uses. City manager's recommendation, I guess, is that we can continue to September. I happen to agree, the concerns I shared at the last meeting and shared with him separately is I feel like this got out ahead of... We got a lot of other questions to answer before we get into specific locations. We got operational questions, financials, et cetera. So I'm comfortable with that, but let's see what the rest of the commission thinks. Commissioner Colodey?
1921, as to the industrial zone. I must say that we have presented to the public over the last three or four months that... And it's been brought before us that there is a homeless issue in this town, which at some times affects our citizens very personally on their own personal property, and that it is necessary, we feel it's necessary, to help them out and help everybody out in general. The discussions have been led by our manager, who's done an excellent job in gathering the data. And we've always presented the information that we had gathered that we're working on a concept. We feel we really need to have a plan, and that we would look for a good place to, if there is such a thing, to have such a facility. Unfortunately, ordinance 8A, and I didn't even realize this when it was first introduced, would lock down virtually the entire town and remove it for consideration for a location and kind of put it only in the industrial zone in that one area, which I don't think is what the public thought we were looking at. So I just couldn't support that. I support the idea of doing something to help out the homeless and our citizens, but I couldn't support this particular way it's written.
So just... I'm looking for clear directions so we can dive into either discussion or continue. So do you want to try to decide and commit on this tonight or continue this until September, October? We can do a vote tonight, proceed through the whole discussion, or continue to September, October. Either way, we're going to hear from the public that's come out tonight.
I want to hear the public. I want to hear what everybody out there has to say, whether they live near the site or not. So I want to proceed with that. If there is a vote tonight, I wouldn't support it.
Okay.
So I do think the proper recommendation is to carry that part of it through till September or October. We're not... We do not have a plan that we are ready to implement to build this type of shelter in this format anywhere in particular. So in my view, there's no point in passing the ordinance to restrict us to this one particular location or to two or three around the airport that it could be in, so...
Okay.
Does that clarify it?
That clarifies it. Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been against this issue. I think I don't want to continue it. These residents have come out to express their displeasure of it and their community and their neighborhood. I can tell you that I want to put it to a vote, because what it will tell the people is, at least, it won't be at this site. And going forward, I do not support a homeless shelter in this community. We have...
There you go. All right. I'm going to let that one slide. But I need you to... Because the cheering is good, and then it turns to booing, and then it just... It doesn't work, trust me. I've been in a lot of these meetings. It doesn't work. So I got to ask you, work with us here. You're going to hear stuff you like. You're going to hear stuff you don't like. We are listening. You're going to have a chance to speak. But we... That's not how we operate a meeting. So if you help me out on that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd also like to support the mayor on that. Please, I know this is a very emotional issue, and there's people who are passionate on their beliefs. So please, I know I may say something you like. There may be a different group in here the next time that doesn't like what I say, and the same will be for them. So to finish my comment, I want to put this through a vote. I don't want to kick this can down the road for them. Like I said, I won't support a homeless shelter in this community, anywhere. I don't want it in my zone, my district, near my house. I'm not going to insist that or support it for the same unless there's a bunch of people who come out in support of it. We have the First Step Shelter. I'm absolutely in favor of using the... Researching the First Step Shelter to where we put the homeless, up in the Daytona First Step Shelter site. Re-engage them to determine how much that would be. And I think that that is how we solve the issue that this homeless camp would help solve our homeless issue locally. So I'm not in favor for continuance. I want to put it to a vote, and I'm going to vote no on it.
Okay. Other comments before we... Sounds like, gentlemen, let's just discuss and get it... Let's move forward tonight. So it's probably the easiest and best way to go forward. So with that, Brian, do you have some opening comments? I mean, I know we've discussed this and debated this many times, so this won't be an exhaustive report, but do you have anything to share to add to the discussion?
No, just to clarify that the first item is for the use, and our current list of permitted uses in many of our zoning districts allows government buildings, government facilities, that in order to have this type of facility in any location, we felt like we needed to provide more detail in our zoning code to allow this specific use. That was the purpose behind this, and we identified the I-2 zoning district for that. So this ordinance would add the facilities owned and operated by governments to clarify that would include temporary housing facilities. And then the next item defines what that is and gives a little more detail. But that was the limit of this, is just to establish that use. This does not approve the program or, you know, many steps down the road. If at some point, you know, the commission wants to take this up, we do need to have this be a permitted use at, if there is a desired location in the city. And that this was a first step in that process. So be glad to take any questions about the content of this report.
Any questions from Brian or other comments before we hear from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Brian, I'm not always comfortable with text amendments. And so we are seeing a text amendment for a heavily industrialized zone. I'm afraid that sometimes they can be good, and sometimes they can backfire. And we've... We're saying we're only considering one I-2 zone, but we have several. Am I correct?
We have several industrial zoning districts. The I-2 zoning, there are multiple properties in the city that are in I-2. This is, you know, we are looking at what would be city or other government-owned property in the I-2 zoning district.
And at this time, we would not consider purchasing someone's private property to do a venture like this?
That has not been considered that I'm aware of.
Yeah. That would be our decision. It's never been discussed by this commission.
Okay. Well, I don't want us to get the cart before the horse. I greatly appreciate Kyle's hard work. I know we've discussed it several times, and I support that as well, that we help those that are needy, that need a roof, that need some social help of many kinds, medical, mental. But at the same time, I would like to hear from all the stakeholders and don't want to rush into something. I'd like to hear from the homeless. I'd like to hear from the folks that live where a homeless shelter might go. These are most important things to me. And possible alternatives to a homeless shelter. And I don't mind saying I may have made a mistake or wanting to do something really bad, you rush to say, yes, let's do it. But then there are circumstances around it that make it a negative thing and turn it sour. So that's why I didn't want to put the cart before the horse, not rushing into it, getting all of our ducks in a row, because we watched the First Step Shelter fumble and stumble and go through power plays. And I want our citizens to be on board. I want our homeless to be on board. Are we really going to help them by doing that? And what cost will it be to the taxpayer and to everyone involved? So I'm not in a terrible hurry. I would like us to vote on it, to have people rest assured whether they may get something like that in the neighborhood or may not. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Hartman, do you have any comments now?
No, I'm in favor of voting for it now, rather than pushing it off till later. I do support it because it's a text amendment to the zoning district. It's a zoning issue. It's not about the homeless camp. It's what... It's strictly a zoning issue at this time. It was gone through the planning and zoning board with approval. It's been through us once with approval. So I think that we need to go ahead and address the issue now, and either vote it up, vote it down, and then go on. This... Even if... However I vote, I'm not voting on the final transitional housing homeless issue that hasn't been presented to us yet. I don't know all the ins and outs of that. The big important part to me is we're not involved in it other than this, that we're not managing it, that it's not a burden on the city, or that we're spending exuberant amount of money on this thing. So this is like Commissioner Sacks says. This is the... To me, this is the first step. It will give College some information, and he can go forward. We can have a plan. We can discuss that plan. We can accept it or deny it at a later date. But I don't think kicking it down the road is the right answer, so...
Okay. I have just a few comments. I'm going to make them now, because it might inform how, you know, the public that wishes to speak, and so they have a sense of where everyone's at up here before they speak. And then that's all I'll say on it. So just to give a little background and some history, and Commissioner Colodey covered it. it. This didn't come out of left field for us, this isn't, that we just sat around and said, you know, hey, what's, what's an issue we should, we should take up? You know, what's a way that we can, you know, fill the room up? It came about because we had folks that were coming, meeting after meeting, and still do on occasion, but had come, meeting after meeting, not just one or two, but several folks, saying, you know, hey, we've got this, we've got this growing issue, we have this, this presence, we have, we're waking up, and, and there's someone sleeping on our couch, on our front porch, there, we're seeing them on our Ring cams, on security cams, you know, bathing in our swimming pools in our backyards and our downtowns. We've got this growing presence along Flagler, harassing tourists and residents and locals alike, and it's really becoming a, an issue in, in our town. And so, we, we had some workshops that were empty rooms, by the way, mainly just, just us and staff, so you're always welcome to attend any of those, they're all public. And so, in those, we talked internally with staff, and we asked experts, we talked to people in the land and elsewhere, and we had presentations from First Step and a lot of other places, and the question was, what are the, what are the ways that we can help address this? And, and I will say right up front, and I've said many times publicly, none of us, and I don't think anyone in this room, has the solution to homelessness. If we did, we can make millions of dollars a year in Seattle right now, because they're, they're dealing with the scourge. So, I don't have a solution, but how, what is the solution, or how can we help this situation in little old New Smyrna Beach? What can we do for our residents to positively impact those that are being negatively impacted now, but not cause an issue for a lot of other folks either? That's not ever our intent. And we went into this pretty, pretty eyes wide open, I knew this day would come. It's easy to talk about it in theory, and then when you put a dot on a map, you start getting in people's backyard. And that's when, that's when this day comes, and it goes from being the empty workshop, where this is a real easy conversation to have, and discuss in theory, and then it becomes, well, it's close to this, and it's not far enough away from that. That being said, a couple of things, and this is just to reiterate and bring you all up to speed on things we have talked about before and acknowledged. You know, there's this notion of, of helping the needy, and I talked to some in the audience that may, may or may not speak tonight, and there certainly is, and I believe New Smyrna is an extremely giving and gracious community, and, and there's this, this element of, of the, the homeless that need help. And I say, you know, it's the, it's the mother that lost a job during COVID, and she's really working to get back on her feet, that, that is an element. The, the experts will tell you, that's not the predominant element, it's usually folks that are dealing with some kind of an issue, they may or may not be working themselves to try to get out of that issue, and the best you can do is try to help them not become an issue in your community while they're dealing with whatever issue it is that they're struggling with. Many of those are in our veteran community, which just breaks, I think, all of our, our collective hearts. So, as we started talking through this and trying to figure out how we deal with this, you know, there's this notion that we, for certain things to happen, for us to be able to enforce certain things, and it could go into a lot more detail on this, but you, you have to have access to what is called a Pottinger compliant shelter, there've been laws that have, that have passed, so if you, if you go research it and look at that. So to give law enforcement some of the tools to help handle some of what I call the vagrant homeless, these are the folks that, they're not trying to be upstanding members of society, they haven't fallen on, on hard times, this is a lifestyle that they have chosen, and, and they're, and they're causing an issue in our community and an issue for our law enforcement. To have our law enforcement have the tools they need, we have to have access to this, a type of shelter, it would be a Pottinger compliant shelter. So, you know, I have struggled from the beginning with, how do we, you know, I don't believe we have an issue with the, the single mom, or, or, you know, the family that's fallen on hard times, I think almost everyone in this room would probably give a dollar or help out in those kind of situations. It's this other whole situation, must, oh, there it is, all right, I saw everybody looking out there, I was like... That's a, maybe... That is a... All right. So, yeah, you're not buying that on a public servant salary, I can tell you that. So, so the, the question is, you know, what do, what do we do with this, this vagrant part? So that leads us to tonight, so we're, we're here tonight, we started down this road, and, and as I said before, and Colin and I have discussed this, like Colin's done a good job with this, and we knew this day would come, when it would, you know, there would be controversy. But I think we're, the, the cart is, as I said, out in front of the horse, meaning, we need a whole plan, we didn't know what other options are available. I, I agree with Commissioner McGurk, you know, is the, the first step shelter, if you followed it back about a year ago, year and a half ago, like, it hasn't been this beacon of hope, it was, it went through some tumultuous times in the early stages. So, in many times, I was glad to not be a, a part of that. Now, maybe times are different now, so I do think it is something we should evaluate. There's all kind of other operational things that we don't know as we sit here today. Now, to Commissioner McGurk's, or Hartman's point, this isn't actually, I mean, we could literally pass these two things tonight, and then nothing else could ever happen. I mean, that, this isn't approving functionally anything, but we get it, it is, you know, you're passionate about it, and if you can stop it at this, then, you know, it can't go any further. So, I've heard you, I have said, I voted against this the last time, I'm also not going to support it tonight, because I don't believe that we're, I think the order of operations is off. I do support trying to give our staff the tools needed to solve a growing problem, not only in our community, but in our society, we, we can't get behind. I don't want to become the next Seattle, and we've had the debate, and I know everyone here will say it, you know, if you build it, they will come, that's the universal debate. It's like, I don't want to be a magnet, I don't want to create, I don't want this to be the, the home, the homeless Mecca by any stretch, but I also don't want to have law enforcement not have the tools needed to enforce some basic ordinances to protect the quality of life of our residents. And that's the balance that, that we're seeking, and I tell you, we have agonized, we've debated, we've discussed it at length, and, you know, there's times it goes well, and times like this where I feel like we got over our skis in this particular one. I don't think that we're sold on this as the location, and that's why I can't support this tonight, but I do support that we have to continue to push forward and figure out something. Maybe it is First Step, maybe it's some other program that we can be a part of, but we've gotta give our staff those tools. That's my commitment I've made to our staff, is, we're not just gonna continue to kick the can, we've gotta do something to address this growing problem, because it is a growing problem, and the daily patrol logs will tell you that in New Smyrna Beach. So, with that, we're gonna open it for public hearing. You, a couple of things, you're gonna have three minutes to speak. Everybody look around and do the math, all right? You're welcome to speak, we'll be here, we have to end the meeting by 11 o'clock by, by code, so we'll be here until then, but you've got three minutes to speak, if you'd give your name and address, if you would address the commission, this isn't, you're not addressing the crowd, you're addressing the commission, we're listening, we're not gonna have a dialogue and respond, we're gonna take notes and we'll respond after everyone, this is your chance to speak, you've listened to us, now we listen to you, and then be respectful. Again, you may hear someone say something you love, don't cheer them, let them speak. You may hear somebody say something you don't like, don't boo them, let them speak, let's be respectful, we're all community, and we can all go grab some dinner after this. So, with that, we'll open it up for public participation. Yes, sir. Give your name and address, if you would.
I'm Dennis Texter, I live at 315 Roslin Avenue, New Smyrna, and I've done quite a bit of research on all this, and I don't need to go into all the statistics, I have told my city councilman these statistics, I've talked to the mayor in Port Orange, and Scott Stultner, the city councilman. The biggest thing right now is, let's get Pottinger compliant, pay the First Step, take the handcuffs off our police chief and our police officers, and let's get this thing taken care of. I am compassionate, I don't want anybody not having a roof over their head or anything else, but instead of going through all these statistics that are exact, because the Port Orange Police Department has kept exact encounters, to date, 126 encounters, okay, out of 126 people, only six people were eligible to be in that homeless shelter out there on 92. So there's a whole bunch more, I have every single one, call them, ask them, they'll give you the information, it's part of the Sunshine Law. I am totally against a homeless shelter in this town, period. We are already paying as taxpayers indirectly in Volusia County for that facility out there, because when the city couldn't do it, and the Catholic Diocese could not do it, the county had to come in and take over. Well, as county taxpayers, we are paying for that, indirectly. I love this town, I live here because I want to, I can live anywhere I want. And as far as changing the zoning, again, I'm a general contractor, you're going to set a precedent to where, when somebody comes in this town and they want something, forget industrial, which is the best, highest taxable property in our town right now, forget that, they want something, and they got enough money, they're gonna get it, because then they're gonna persuade you, whether it's this council or another one, to do it. Don't start a precedent tonight for no reason, when you, you just sat there and said, you looked at all statistics, everything else, we don't have any, we don't even know what the price is gonna be until June 2nd, from last meeting. And I want this publicized more, there's never been a placard out on that fence that said we're gonna change the zoning, like they do in the county and everywhere else in this county. So stop trying to slip this in, and let's get on board with the community, yes, there is another option, and that's First Step that we're already paying for. I'm against it 100%, no matter what, and I'm not gonna stop, and I will have to come to every, every meeting till October, September, whatever, I will come to every single meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Jarrell, I live at 331 Hanley, I've lived in New Smyrna for 20 years, paid taxes, I am strictly against homeless shelter in my neighborhood and the city. Like I say, we need to, yes, we need, do need to do something for the homeless, but one of the problems with the homeless is, a lot of them want to be homeless, that's the problem, they don't want to step forward, I mean, unemployment as it is, businesses around here, I mean, anywhere you look, hiring, 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 they don't want jobs, they just want to put their hand out and you to put something in it for them. You know, we, you guys talked about having these meetings, I mean, we just, I don't know how we found out about this arbitrarily last week, that this meeting was even happening and what was being discussed, and I don't know if the neighborhoods, other neighborhoods are the same or not, but, you know, workshops or whatever you are having, you know, yes, it would be nice somehow that the public was informed, in the paper, flyer sent out, I mean, some, somebody said the only way they found out about this is if somebody stuck a flyer on their daughter's door, and it just so happened, you know, and then word gets out that way. Again, you know, I think, yes, we do need to do something for the homeless, I mean, we have veterans out there that are homeless, and they've served our country, and they need to be taken care of, yes, but then again, there's a majority of these people that, they don't want to do anything, they just want handouts, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. All right. I appreciate those of you that are not clapping. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Susan Stuckey, I live at 726 Doherty Street, here in New Smyrna Beach. My shirt says it costs to hate, it does. We hate what we fear, we fear what we don't know. I am happy to speak in gratitude for and support of the proposed plan to assist the local homeless community. I wonder how many in this room have actually known a homeless person? I have, more than once. I'd like to share my recent real-life story. I've known Jane Doe for about three years, she came to our church. She is currently 71 years old, she is not a drug user or a convict, she has no family support and only social security income, she can afford to rent a room in someone's home, she has no control over what that person's choices are. Sunday, she called me with one day to be out of the room she had been renting, the owner was selling the home her room was in. Did she have the legal right to more notice? Maybe, but when you have no money to access your rights, it is not easy. She found a church that did intake for a shelter. I got her a room in a motel for a night to wait for that to happen, an inexpensive one, $77. I am not wealthy. The next day, I took her to intake. No space, they'll call her in a few, but she has no place to go. Well, they have no money to help. I look for a less expensive place in case we need more days. I register on my phone at the place they recommend at the, at the shelter. We drive up, it is filthy and unsafe looking, I could not leave her there. We go back to the first hotel, register for two nights in hope of good news at the shelter. $157. I am not wealthy, but she is a human being, 71 years old with no one to help her. What will the outcome be? I don't know. I do know, a month at a motel will be $2,300, more than our house payment. But you see, even a homeless person could find, if they could find a home, I, I'm sorry, if, even if they could find a reasonable rent, where do they get references? ID? Deposits? First and last payment, where's the way out? A homeless living site has been successful in many cities, the feeling of belonging and responsibility are stepping stones to rebuilding traditional lives. I have called pages of resources, they don't answer their phone, and the one who did was not able to help.
All right, thank you, that's your time. Yes, ma'am. All right, guys, genuinely, I need, we gotta keep rolling, I don't need comments after, no clapping, no booing, we gotta keep it rolling and professional, thank you, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Sally Jowers, I live on 318 Trudgeon Drive, I've spent 25 years the street over, on Roslin Avenue, which almost butts up to the land that you're speaking about to put the homes, and 25 years on the other street with my husband. So I've been there a total of 50 years in that neighborhood, and I'm just here to say that I don't want this in my neighborhood, I think we're all compassionate to the homeless, but there are a lot of children in that area, there's a new dog park in that area where I've gone by myself with my dog, and there's a skate park that's right there, and with a lot of children, three to adults, I've frequent that with my son, and there, we have a beautiful ballpark, both my boys have played football there, and since they were little boys, and I think we know what would happen if they were right around the corner. So, I just want to say that I want to protect my neighborhood, and I want to protect this community, and I say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, next.
Hi, Lisa Martin, 618 South Pine Street, I'd like to say two things, one, I am concerned that we're talking about all people without roofs as if they were all the same, when there's a variety of people with different needs, and number two, when we talk about having things like First Step, could we ask our chief to talk about what happens, and how much it costs, and what the process is when a transient is picked up for trespassing or sleeping or whatever, and let's see what it would cost us to take one person, for example, to First Step, presumably to find out they're full and couldn't be processed anyway?
Okay. We've, we've had that discussion at the workshop, but yeah.
That's it.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Thanks, councilmembers, I'm John Galbraith, I live at 1208 Larian Street, New Smyrna Beach, right around the corner from Sally there. What's important is, the land that we're talking about, I've lived there, I'm seventh generation from this city, that land that's right there, it's not used, more importantly, it is a wildlife corridor. You can set your clock by, when the wood ducks come light in there 15 minutes before sundown. When I joined the military about a couple of years afterwards, the city tried to do some, development in there, and the neighborhood gathered around and said, no, we don't want any development in there, because there's wildlife. People tried to say that there wasn't, but they showed a picture of my little brother with a 43-pound drum, that was caught out of there. But anyhow, there's a lot of, that's wildlife corridor, when you start adding people in there, building in there, that wildlife has to go somewhere else, and that's gonna go out into the neighborhood. We already have a problem with that stuff out there. But mark my words, once you open this door, it will be a hard door to close, if you can at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Next up. For time's sake, if you want to speak after him, if you can kind of queue up, I'd appreciate it. Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony Luizzo, I live 1597 Industrial Drive, that's where we have our business, behind the police station on Industrial Avenue, we do background checks. I'm just here to say that from, we moved into this area, in the industrial area, to do business, and the optics are tremendous when you try to bring customers in, and the optics are just not right, period. So from a business perspective, I only say, it is something that we would have to look at and probably move out, and we have about 50 people working with us, and they're gonna have to go with, with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next, as you come, if you would, just give me one second, Commissioner McGurk just suggested, I think it's a good suggestion, I know, we want to hear from everyone, but again, for time's sake, if perhaps you don't want to speak, or someone else has kind of said what you wanted to say, I'd ask for a show of hands, if you're not in favor of the proposal tonight, show of hands. All right. Did you count those? Okay. All right, thank you. I saw two hands from somebody back there, that's cheat, that's not, come on, that's not how we vote in Florida. All right, and if you're in favor, just out of complete fairness, if you're in favor, and again, it may not be perfectly, because this isn't even a full proposal, but if you're in favor of this or doing something in this capacity, also show of hands here tonight. Let me see a few hands. Thank you. All right. With that, again, just trying to make sure we kind of hear from everyone. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Janet Shira, and I was...
My name is Janet Shira, and I was one of the people who worked with your city manager and other staff on putting together a draft program that I, as I understand, is going to come before you next month. I want to thank you for considering a program. I think it's very progressive. It's very needed. And I can, I can appreciate people being nervous about it being located in proximity to their homes or their businesses. I don't know if we can find a place that isn't in proximity to somebody's home or somebody's business, but I hope we can, because I really do believe this is necessary. I spent 2020 getting out and meeting some of our homeless population. I did that through a small group of women who are with my church, First Presbyterian Church of New Smyrna Beach. We go out once a week and we provide food, clothing, whatever, toiletries, whatever we can, and, and conversation. And we've met many people who fall under the category of chronic homeless people. They are, they are all varied, different. A lot of them have issues with addiction, mental health. I can carry on a conversation with all of them. I've gotten closer to them over the past year. They've shared their lives with me as they gain trust. And I want to tell you that several of them would take advantage of a program if offered. And I, I really encourage you to move forward with the program and, and find a location and make it work. Many of these people have ties to New Smyrna Beach. I know a lot of the people tonight said, I've lived here all my life. I met a woman who, who used to own a home on beachside. She was married at First Presbyterian Church. So she fell on hard times. She has a story. She's also approaching seventy. And she sleeps in the woods. It's, it behooves us to at least try and do something. And we've put a program together that we think would be a good program to try. It's not a permanent structure. It won't encompass a huge population. And, and I know I'm running out of time, but the last count, 2020, January of 2020, the official count in New Smyrna Beach was fifty-one homeless people. So we're not talking about a lot of people. And there are, we can develop rules, regulations, whatever, whatever you deem necessary. But I hope you will still try. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there.
Hello.
My name is Chad Lancaster. I'm here on behalf of Goss Incorporated. We're a manufacturing company, 1419 Industrial Drive, right across from the, the site.
Pull, pull that mic up a little bit, if you would.
Yeah. We're right across from the, the site of the location that we're talking about. Just to kind of give you a, a basic background history, real quick. Been in business since nineteen forty. The company's originated in Pittsburgh, PA. The owners of the company moved to New Smyrna Beach. I'm born and raised here in New Smyrna Beach. You know, I started with this company, which was developed in the building itself in nineteen eighty-six. You know, it's a growing company. We mainly supply the HVAC, plumbing, roofing. And, you know, we have a plan going forward. We own the majority of the property that faces toward the, the location. And, and you know, the, the general outlook is, we're going to put a retail shop, you know, facing that direction. And I just don't think that it's a good location. Again, to kind of alliterate some of the stuff that you said, you know, you build it, they'll come. I don't know. Kind of just brings trouble with the mix. And I'm not for it. And that's, I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
How's it going? Mike Brooks, 79 Cunningham. I was homeless. And to enable people is not the way to go. We need to clean this town up, not, not invite more garbage. I moved from Orlando in order to get away from it. And I don't want to see it come here. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come ahead.
Good evening. Bob Deimers, 223 Quayac C.C. I also own the Turnbull Technology Center out on Turnbull Bay Road, thirteen sixty Turnbull Bay Road, right adjacent to where you want to, what you're proposing to change the zoning to put this homeless shelter. I want to say that, listen, I'm, I'm a disabled veteran. I've worked with homeless people in the past. I understand helping our homeless. I'm for helping our homeless. I don't think that anybody's going, in this room, will say that we're not for helping our homeless. I don't believe it needs to go in our business park, a place that we've been trying to develop in this town for a lot longer than a lot of you've been sitting on this council. It'll hurt our property values there. It'll take away from businesses that want to be there. I house ten businesses in the, in the Turnbull Technology Center. I have had to do a lot of work to secure that property due to vagrants coming through, stealing, taking things that aren't, you know, that aren't tied down. We don't need any more of that going on where I'm at, in, in our business park, in our only business, industrial business park in New Smyrna Beach. Also, we have, we have a skate park, as was mentioned. We've got ball fields. We have children there. Let's look at who these homeless people are. Some of them are disabled veterans. That heart, that, that goes to my heart. That's who I hire. Veterans, and mostly disabled veterans. But it's also people that, that have mental issues. I understand that. It's also people that have drug issues or, or substance abuse issues. But it's also, and we don't want to say it, nobody wants to open up and say it, but it's also sex offenders. Do we want that in our neighborhoods? In our, by our ballparks? By our skate parks? No. Do we want to help our homeless? Yes. This is the wrong place to put it, that you're, that's being discussed. I'm not saying that that's where it's going to go. But we should look a lot closer to that. And I, as a gentleman said earlier, if we start changing our ordinances and changing our zoning, next thing you know, it's going to end up there, because I've seen it in this town a hundred times. It's going to be a hotel. Jason, I want to say, this is the first time I agree with you about something. Have a good night.
You should come over to my side more often. I think you like it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure. I'm Kimberly Lancaster. I'm actually the wife of Chad that came up with Goss Incorporated. Just wanted to kind of give you an idea. We actually owned a business. We owned a salon in this town for ten years. We relocated. We actually tried, as a fourth generation, born and raised here, we opened a salon at the Cameron Shopping Center. And we got rid of our salon five years there, totally rebuilt. I wanted to bring something to that area that had kind of vanished. And we dealt with the homeless. And I was there at night by myself. My husband was concerned. And now I'm looking at, my husband goes to work, dark. There's, I don't like the idea of him having to be there and people coming harassing him at work. I don't like the idea of, I go to the dog park when I take him lunch. And I've recently been able to go there alone. I don't like the idea of not feeling safe to go to a dog park by myself with my dog, thinking that I'm going to get harassed or anything. And I am totally compassionate to anyone that's homeless veteran. I'm a nurse. I will help anyone. But I have personally tried to help people. I had a pastor that worked for me at a salon. We offered help to these people. I would come to work and there'd be people sleeping at my back door, maybe showering in sea's waffles sink out back, you know, and it's scary. And I just, with the kids getting ready to get out of school, we have skate parks, dog parks, ballparks, everything. I just don't think this is the greatest location for us to do. And we're already suffering with the car dealerships that have closed down there. It's already kind of given a bad feel there. Now you bring this in. I believe we need to help them. I agree with the woman who spoke prior, that we do need to offer help. But put them right in with our kids and our family and people that have, you know, trying to do business that our community needs, especially now more than ever. Just don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You know, one, one thing I've learned on that dog park is pretty popular. It's a great addition to that neighborhood. Glad to hear that. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Keith Dyckman. I live at 307 Trudgeon. There's a difference between drug users, drug users and, you know, people that have lost their homes and stuff like that. I think what we're getting down here is more the bad part instead of the good part. The more homeless you have, the more homeless will be here, especially with people traveling throughout the country. They're moving. They're just getting out. They're moving someplace where it's warm. And I'll tell you what, I've dealt with these people. I worked for a major bus company, dealt with them every single day. The smell, the pot smell, you can smell it all over them. We try to make them stop. They won't do it. The railroad tracks, they're going to be traveling up and down the railroad tracks, going to Walmarts, panhandling. That's what they're looking for. Easy access to Walmart and any of the stores, panhandling, where they could find people to beg from. That's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about the person that needs someplace to stay, you know, lost their home. I just think it's a bad area. We moved here a year and a half ago. We love it. She watched the dog at the dog park. I don't want to see her get mugged or something like that. Can you understand what I'm saying? And that's what it's going to bring. He knows it. He deals with it every day.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. He's got, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Annette Taylor, 87 Cunningham. As a previous owner of Taylor Storage on the corner of Industrial and US One, we had several clients that were homeless. They were our eyes and our ears when we weren't there. They paid in cash. They paid early. We also had homeless that we found passed out in our driveway when we would come to work and we would have to call the police several times to remove the homeless. I am not against helping homeless. I am for it. I am against the location and changing the zoning to have a homeless shelter in that area. Because what we experienced, there will be more of it. You can't deny that. I just think there's a better place for it. So I am against the zoning change for this area, not against helping the homeless.
Thank you, Annette. Yes, sir.
Name's Terry Cooper, 1014 Turnbull Street. I can sympathize with a lot of these people behind me back here. I venture to say that ninety-five percent of them are here for the same purpose I'm here for. I've helped people on the street. I've stopped and guy has a sign out, says, we'll work for food. Okay? Instead of him working, I'll stop and buy him a hamburger McDonald's, Burger King that's now shut down. What does he do with it? Throws it in a bag, look at me, goes, I really don't want that. I want money. That way I can buy my drugs or I can buy my beer. They don't want help from us. They want their drugs. They want their beer. Just like the other gentleman said, you got pedophiles out there. I'm not scared to say it. I'll say it all day long. There's pedophiles out there. There's kids that want to hurt, there's, there's people that want to hurt these kids around our area. What are you going to do about that? You're going to build a place out there? You don't build a sewage plant next to a restaurant expected to thrive. And that's basically what you're going to do. There's a sewage plant out there. That's what that used to be. They used to put human fetal matter out there to dry. That's what that was. That's what their area was. Now, now you're going to build it into a homeless shelter and put more stink, basically in the same area where it was before? And all of us that live in that area are going to have to deal with that? Uh-uh. To coin a phrase from Jaws, if you guys continue with what you've got going now, and you don't pay attention to what these people are telling you guys, it's going to swim up and bite you in the butt. That's what it's going to do. They don't want it. I don't want it. I watch people coming by my house all the time on a sidewalk across the street. They've had people come up in my driveway, hey bud, you got a five dollar bill for you? I'll pay you back. Bull. You think I'm going to give a guy five bucks? Because if you give him five one day, next day it's going to be ten. They're not going to pay you back. They just want the money. They don't care. So if you build that place out there, you're all elected officials. Guess what? We're all residents. We know where elected officials come from. We elect you. And if you ignore these people back here, it's going to come back to bite every one of you in the butt.
All right. Any others? It's a rowdy crowd here tonight, chief. I've asked nicely. I've done, I don't know, everything I know to do. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing from all of us. I appreciate your time. I know times like this, this is pretty thankless. My name's Michael Polly. I live at 2511 Milton Avenue. Very heavily involved with Sports Complex, which is close to this site. We got a skate park there. You've heard the list. You hear the things, right? These are folks that I don't want around my children, period. Heard stories of great things. Some of these people do good things. Some of these people falling on hard times. I'm all for giving people a hand up. But we're talking about sixteen beds. And we've already heard from somebody that they counted fifty-one homeless. Well, what happens to the other thirty, thirty-five? Right? They're going to hang around that area. They're not the cleanest. They are people, so I don't want to degrade them. They're, they're definitely people, but I don't think that that's something we need in this area. We definitely don't need to change zoning laws to create something like this in the area. I will say not in my backyard. I live right around the corner. And if I'm going to say not in my backyard, I can't say in their backyard either. So I'm definitely not in favor of this. No need to come up here and, and talk about elected officials or things like that. You guys are doing what you're supposed to do. You're hearing from the folks. And I'm certain we're going to come to the right decision here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Pull that mic down for me, if you would.
Good evening. I'm Donna Ferry. I moved here last year. I'm at 2532 Glenwood Avenue. I'm representing my family and close neighbors. They wanted me to share my story. I came here from La Jolla, California, celebrated area. At least as beautiful as here, I think this area has, is much more pristine. We have so much more going for it. I never thought would happen to me would ever come to that area. When shelters were opened up in Southern California, in San Diego, the homeless came. This, I am not talking about people as if they didn't have needs. There's an element that follows the homeless and preys upon them. I'm a counselor. I've actually talked to the Vietnam vets who used to come to the area. And so I know them as people. But I was accosted, not once, not twice, but three times in the year before I moved here. I'd already planned to move here. I upped my move and came sooner. It's not fun. I had only my own wits. I know the police would come as quick as they could, but it's not always possible in these situations. I would wake up at night and hear the Starbucks where they were allowed to encamp, this criminal element. And if they were moved by the police, they would come back, chasing down women. So there were rapes. These were not reported because this is a very highly, highly affluent area, million dollar, multimillion dollar homes where I lived. And people thought it would never happen. I pray that my friends there will find a solution. I, I pray my new friends and neighbors here will find a way to prevent it from even coming here. This area is beautiful. People have already talked about all the reasons. I'm sure there'll be more reasons. The pristine beauty of this area and the hearts of the people can find a way to help. We know there are people who've fallen on hard times. It's already been said. But these people are preyed upon. This is an element that follows. Where is the new shelter going to be? So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the area. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mary Ann Pastilly, and I live at twenty-five twenty-six Glen Haven Street in New Smyrna. No, I don't live right in that vicinity, but as we're all well aware, that where there's homeless shelters, they do find their way to Beachside and throughout the community. I'm a very compassionate person. I, for one, will put my money where my mouth is when somebody falls on hard times and I know them or somebody shares a story with me. I have brought many people into my home or into my poolhouse and helped them get on their feet. And I think that's something more people should get involved in doing if you have the time and if you have the space. But don't stand up here and make, and not so much to you all, but other people in the audience, if you really are that compassionate, give them a room in your house for a while. But as my main concern is, you all know, I'm sure, of a community called Venice Beach, California. Venice Beach was a beautiful beach town, just like here. And I'm very proud to live in New Smyrna. I've been here over thirty years now. I've owned businesses here. And every day, I always thank God that I live in this gorgeous town and I live in this wonderful state of freedom. But we cannot allow that here in New Smyrna. It will spread. They're on Chicken Island now. I'm sure you're all aware of that. There's people with boats that are bringing the homeless onto Chicken Island. You know, so it just spreads like wildfire. And first thing first in all of your jobs is to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you'd pull that mic up so they can hear you.
Hi, my name is Dwayne Moody. I live at thirteen oh three Turnbull Street, and this is in my backyard. It's in my walk every morning. I go by this location all the time. We already have pedophiles living in New Smyrna Estates. It lives right next door to me at thirteen oh seven. There's also a trailer parked out back there where they, he lives in it. So this is already happening in our communities, and I don't think anybody here is aware of it. I'm opposed to this because of all the reasons you've just heard. If you're gonna approve this and put this in my backyard, I'm gonna come and ask you for a zoning variance on my own, and I'll put one in my two acres in my backyard. If that's how we're gonna solve the problem. Now, I agree, it's probably the biggest social issue we've got. I'm not against homeless folks. I like to help people when I can. I ride with the Christian Motorcycle Association. We minister to the homeless all the time. But I'm asking you guys to come up with a plan, which I don't hear, wanna hear tonight. I hear a lot of folks upset, some things talked about, but I don't hear a plan. So we're gonna leave it up to you gentlemen that we voted for to come up with that plan. And if we don't like it, we'll vote you out, right? God bless.
That's how it works. All right. Yes, sir.
My name's Larry Gill, and I live at thirteen eleven Turnbull Street. And I'd like, I've been here about four and a half years, and I don't know what anybody's been looking at, but I've seen homeless people come out of, behind the dog park for four and a half years on a daily basis.
Talking to the mic.
They have come out.
Talking to the mic real good if you would, so I can hear you.
They have come out basically after nights of being in the woods behind our coveted new dog park. They've been doing it for four and a half years, right across the street from the police department, and they come out in droves. They come out in bicycles. They come out in ten and twelve at a time. And this has been happening right on Turnbull Street for four and a half years. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill Fager. I'm a lifelong resident of New Smyrna, third generation. My parents had Fager seafood, and I was a CPA on Canal Street for twenty-five years. I'm now retired. I live at one oh two Landis, which is in the footprint of what you're planning to do. And because of, there's no facilities for anything in that particular area, the path that people take is from skate park or from the homeless pent up Turnbull Street, up to Turnbull Bay Road next to the Catholic Church and then to the Dollar General. So it basically funnels these people right through our neighborhood. There's a church across the street from my house. I'm on a corner lot. And we're on the eastern flyway for homeless people. In the wintertime, they work their way down. They stop by the churches. They go to home. So if you make it attractive for them, you will attract more. You'll become a magnet. I spent my life in the seafood business dealing with commercial fishermen. Some of them are great. Some of them have substance abuse. Some of them are homeless. So I'm not, I do have compassion, but I also know there's a lot that you can't do that they have to do. And as my understanding, a majority of the people that are homeless are either mental illness or substance abuse. And giving them someplace to stay is not gonna solve any one of those problems. The homelessness is a disease. It's not, it's a symptom. It's not the disease. And if, I also had the unfortunate, I traveled back and forth and worked in Orlando for a CPA firm on West Colonial, across the street from the Salvation Army. And literally, we had to have security come in in the morning and in the evening, and we had to hose down the area. It got so bad, our female employees wouldn't come to work. Salvation Army has a good program, but the problem is those people's friends, since they can't get in, they hang out in the local buildings. And then the next morning, they're selling their drugs or whatever. So I've been a president of the Chamber of Commerce here. I've been on the Utilities Commission. I've been the president of the Kiwanis Club. I've lived in the same house for forty-five years, raised three kids. I've done a lot to try to build this community into something we can be proud of. And building a homeless shelter is not gonna be anything good. It's gonna be bad for this community. And I would like to address specifically eight A. If you pass that as it is, you're automatically making it a zoning regulation. If it's anything, it should be an accepted use. It has to go through. And you're also saying it can be transit housing, but you haven't defined transit housing. So in closing, what I'd like to say is, please, don't New York my Florida. Thank you.
All right. Any others? Yes, ma'am. I don't wanna silence anyone. I do feel like we've heard the vast majority of you, but, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name is Peggy Smith. I live at eleven eleven Hill Street. I came here by the grace of God, three, five years ago, for three days, and I'm still here because I fell in love with this place. My granddaughter had been here with a college group, but she said, "Grandma, go down and try it." And I haven't left. This town has a national reputation, an international reputation. I've been to La Jolla and Seattle and San Diego and all those places that were beautiful cities twenty-five years ago. I'm not sure they rival us, but they were beautiful places. They aren't anymore. I'm just begging you all not to change this place. And what you're, what's being proposed, wherever you put it, it's gonna change this place immeasurably. And I'm one who's worked with the homeless. I'm a lawyer. Our judge loved me because I loved everybody. I was, I'm very maternal. I was trying to help everybody. I've seen their lives up close and personal because I represented many beautiful women who were beat repeatedly. In fact, I'm very sorry I didn't call the police recently when I saw a woman running her life behind Publix on forty-four. I bear that in my heart. I should've called her, helped for her. I worked with them as a lawyer, and I also worked with them at my church. My church fed the homeless, and I helped prepare the meals and feed them. I love doing that. But they slept on the steps, and they slept in the bathrooms, and they were passed out in the yards. And my kids wouldn't go to church anymore. My husband's a former DA. He's a university professor, criminologist, and an author on books on premises crime. So read his books. Michael Clay said, if you wanna look that up. He's a Marine. We worked with the homeless, and we've worked with the crime that's created. My plea to you is that you represent us. You're our voice. We love this town. I want you to please represent your constituents. There are other options. If there were no other options, it'd be a different matter, but there are options. So thank you all, Ann. God bless you.
Thank you. All right. Roy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Roy Mattson on Roswell and Turnbull. Let you all know, one thing that nobody thought about that's been brought to my attention, the school bus depot directly behind the county school bus authority, they've already expressed to me, they wanted me to speak on behalf of the school commission. They do not want it there because somebody is gonna have to provide security. Those buses don't get locked up. Drivers come in at four o'clock in the morning. They don't wanna have to worry about somebody sleeping in the back of the bus and they can't get them out when they have a time to be somewhere to pick up their schoolchildren. Another thing to think about, where are you putting it? Like everybody here behind me that supported me and sending this email out when we found out about it, is we don't want them walking through our neighborhood. Why don't we try to do something with Utility Commission and the city of New Smyrna Beach on the eight hundred acres? Buy Walmart. Give it a try if we're gonna do something. But there's also a better way that I think we can do this. I think that the police department finds out what churches are willing to help the people that are down on their luck and really want help to get back on their feet. There's certain churches that are willing to help because I was once homeless for ten years. I left home because my parents were alcoholic at eight years old. At eighteen years old, I finally found out that, you know, I can work, I'm legal, and I was back at work. Everything I've got is what I've earned and worked for. I do not want this in my backyard. Please consider trying to work with the people that are down on their luck, with the churches. Otherwise, let's send them all out to First Step. Think of it this way, for every one of us, forty of them, will pay the yearly fee that we're paying at First Step instead of paying that money to the district attorney, I mean, the state attorney's office for anybody who requests a public defender at twenty-five hundred dollars a person. All it takes for forty of us to pay the same fee that we'd be paying at First Step. Let's work that way. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. William Levin, two oh seven Sandy Lane. I think a thing that we haven't really talked about tonight is there's been a lot of money put into our sports complex. We have Pop Warner games with the younger kids. You got high school games, people traveling from all over the state to come in and play. And that's gonna be one of the first things that they see as they drive into the community. You've got the skate park. You've got the dog park, which you guys are also putting a lot of money into. And I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of is that there's a lot of children around here. I understand these people need some help. There's a lot of churches around here that are willing to help, maybe try to get with these people and put them into a certain area. Nobody wants a homeless camp in their community. I mean, you could put them out by ninety-five, but then they're close to Venetian Bay. You could put them somewhere else, and you're gonna get another community to get upset. So I understand we're in a bad spot, but at the same time, we gotta think about where we're putting them. You guys have put a lot of money, tax money, into making the sports complex what it is. And to go throw in that right next door to it, I think is a slap in the face to everybody that's paid money for that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. We are going to close public participation. I thank you all for your participating, those that have chosen to stay. So we're now gonna discuss it. Again, my last request of you all, you're gonna hear things as we go through, and honestly, we may not need a lot of discussion. A lot of us spoke beforehand, but you may hear things you like, things you don't like. But we're gonna get this to a vote, hopefully before the night is over, and then we will move on. I did wanna address just a couple of things that I heard, just to make sure we're on the same page. One gentleman mentioned about the signs weren't there as other things. This isn't a rezoning. It's a modifying a list of permitted uses so it doesn't require that same kind of notification. All the legal notifications that are required have been done. You know, I take a little bit of umbrage to this, you know, trying to slip it in. You know, everything we do is in public. We publish our agendas. Phil, our PIO submits on Facebook and other ways, a summary of what's on the meeting topic. Khalid calls into the local radio station, talks about what we're talking about. I give a summary the next day. You know, we do what we can. We can't go door to door and put flyers in everyone's door. I mean, it's just, we can't do that. So I, I'm always, it's always a bit frustrating when we get to stuff like this because we hear that feedback and, you know, look, we do what we can. If you've got ideas on better ways, I don't have a mass, you know, email button for everyone in the community, but we certainly do what we can to try to push information out. And the last one was, just as a, just to make sure we're all talking the same language here, we're not talking about like an encampment where there's, you know, homeless are setting up tents. We're talking about a facility and a structure. That's not really what we're talking about tonight at all, but that was the, that was the vision. So it's not germane to tonight, but just so there's clarity on that. Because I know there's some misinformation in some of the things that I heard, so. With that, a gentleman would like to do, if you're okay with it, is let's just go down the road one more time. If anybody has any final thoughts or comments based on what you heard tonight or anything else you'd like to share, and then we'll take, and we'll take a vote. So this is for item eight A. Who would like to lead us off? If anybody has anything extra. Commissioner McGirt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. And I think one thing was made clear. Nobody is against helping the homeless. Everybody here is showing compassion. We have compassion up here. We do have a homeless problem. It is something that's been on the top of my list for three or four years now. I've seen it come, and it's getting worse. There's no easy answer to it, or we wouldn't be here tonight. There's many complicated layers of dealing with homeless. Wanna stress, what we're not trying to solve and deal with is the single mom living in a car with two kids, down on her luck. That's not how this discussion started when we initially started talking about the problem a couple of years ago. So I don't want that to get lost in translation. I'm very proud of this community. I'm very proud of everybody who's come out tonight. And I think everyone I listened to speak tonight is correct. This is a very bad location for a number of different reasons. I don't have a place that I can tell you I wanna put it because I can't think of a place where it will fit. This is a small town. It is a small community. The irony is, this is why the First Step Shelter was put where it is on ninety-two, out by the jail. We chose not to go with it at first. It was a bad deal for you all. However, things have changed. We have a homeless problem that we did not have back then. It is exacerbated and getting worse. To be Potager compliant, I have no problem with us joining the First Step Shelter. There's a big backstory to this homeless that we all have worked through for years, which you all are not familiar with, and there's no reason why you should. So when I start talking about being Potager compliant, I know that's gonna not resonate with anybody. But the bottom line is, to fill the requirement of being Potager required, we can use the First Step Shelter or something else similar. But that is why it's in ninety-two because many, all the cities dealt with the same issue we're dealing with tonight. So I look forward to finding and working with my fellow commissioners in the community to find the best way possible. It is very difficult, but this is not the location where it should be for many different reasons. And for that, I'm going to vote no on it. And Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, and then I'll let someone second it for discussion if you want. I'll make a motion. Now, I want to make something clear to everybody. I'm going to make the, all motions have to be made in the affirmative. So the motion's going to be made to accept it, and then you vote yes or no. Just to be clear, so someone isn't scared to make a motion, so you interpret it, oh, that guy was for it. It's not how that works. So Mayor, on item A, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion to adopt ordinance 1921 is made by Commissioner McGurk. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Yes.
Commissioner, I heard Vice Mayor, we'll go to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think I need a few more words. Commissioner McGurk and I sat on this dais, I believe, if I'm correct, if history is correct, we had visited this issue before with First Step Shelter. When we watched it evolve, I think we all had misgivings. I personally did not want to send homeless people to First Step. They had all kinds of organizational problems, money problems, power problems. And I felt also this, homeless people, whether you live here, pay taxes, or you're homeless and you love this city, you want to be here. So if we put someone in a police car and they get sent up to First Step Shelter, if they want to go, hopefully, chances are they may want to come back. And chances are they do come back because they love it here more. So why waste time, assets, especially police time, in sending people where they don't really want to go? I thought that myself. Do I want to be out in the middle of the woods next to the jail? So we all wanted to help try to solve a homeless problem. It is a growing problem. In our small city, it's a growing problem. I live off of Saxon Avenue, we have an extensive woods. Every now and then, there are homeless people living there, spending the day there. My constituents, my friends, my neighbors, they're all afraid to walk on that beautiful trail in the woods. I'm not afraid to walk in the woods. I know some homeless people. I know a fellow who just got his bike stolen because that's a major mode of transportation for the homeless. And he's asking for help to find another bike, and we're going to try and do that. They're victims of crime also. I don't want to try, I still think, there but for the grace of God go I. And I am my brother's keeper. I know that within an hour, something can happen to me or a family member, and I can be living under a bridge too. So I am compelled to do something. I'm so glad that you all came out to express your concerns because I do understand that you might be concerned if it was in your backyard, your property values, your children, your safety. That is very true. And you are the number one stakeholders, since you pay taxes here. But we also have the stakeholder of the homeless person who deserves a fair shake. We can't help everybody. There are drug issues, there are alcohol issues, mental illness. But then there are some that we can help. There's a very small percentage, I believe, that we can help. But let me end by saying, I don't want to make a problem of homelessness bigger by sticking it where our residents don't want it. It's unfortunate. I was at a county council meeting one time, and a councilman said to me, well, you're just a nimby. And I was a little offended, and I got over it quickly. But now I totally understand what people mean by "not in my backyard." I hope we are a city of enough love that we care enough to do something. To have it in the backyard, okay, it may be premature. I think the mistake that I spoke of earlier, as politicians sometimes do, was be premature in my thoughts about the First Step Shelter. At the same time, it did have problems. So that's why we all backed off the shelter. I don't know whether our city should have a shelter. It's a very small city. I still call it a town mistakenly. But our homeless population is growing. So I hope we can join all together to come up with solutions. I know that there's brilliant people in this audience who really care, who want to do something. Some people don't want to give any of their tax dollars to the homeless, and I don't blame them. I understand that also. But I see the preponderance of the people here tonight don't want it in their backyard. And at this point, I want to continue the discussion, but I don't want, I think industrial doesn't have the assets that we need, and people don't want it there. There's no bus stop there, there's no food to be bought there. It can cause more problems than we're trying to solve. So I think we might consider looking in another direction. But still, try and help those that need our help. Thanks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Colodey.
Well, I kind of stated my position when I first spoke on this. And I've listened to all you residents out there. I love people coming to these meetings. And I haven't heard anything that really changes my opinion. I do think we have to help a certain percentage of the homeless people to protect our residents who are bothered and infringed upon by them. All along, we've said, we'll look for a good place throughout the city. And if we pass this ordinance, we are kind of going against what we said. We're just limiting to one little section of the township. I'm going to ask our manager to go ahead, assuming this fails. Go ahead and continue his discussions and see if we can come up with a more precise plan as to how to deal with that specific aspect of the problem. But until we go that way, farther down that road, I don't support this ordinance.
Anything to add?
I'm good.
Okay. Last comments to echo Commissioner McGurk, I think you said it well. To be very clear, my position, doing nothing is, the path of least resistance is often doing nothing. Because when you try to do something, this is what happens, and you encounter, you know, objections or your conflicts or whatever. So I get it. And if I were in your shoes, I'd be the exact same, you know, I'd be in the exact same case. And that being said, as I said in the beginning, we have a growing problem. And so my position has been from the very beginning, I want to give our staff, including our law enforcement, but you can't law enforce your way out of homelessness. And I encourage you to do some research about that. But the time, the day and age, the perception, if you will, of just being able to arrest someone and put them on a bus to a different city, that's not how it works. I'm not saying that's, whether it ever should have worked that way, but that certainly isn't the day that we live in today. So we often, and we've debated this again at length to the one commenter, we've had those discussions about the resources off the road to transport to First Step. This isn't, there's no new ground really uncovered tonight. But I hear your concerns, I'm also concerned with the growing problem. So I don't think we can stop this conversation. I don't think we celebrate that, you know, this is sounding from my commissioners, sounding like this is going to fail. I'm okay with that. I didn't think this was the right direction for this, necessarily standpoint of this location. But I don't think we can go all the way back to zero and stick our head in the sand and say we don't have a growing problem in this community. That being said, I will also readily acknowledge, and this is backed up by, it's hard to get real date on this, but a good bit of the problem is not the homeless that we all would like to help that are seeking help. Those people have, there are ample resources for some of those folks, for most of those folks. The ones that are the issues are the ones that they don't want the help. When you give them the hand, the hand up, the hand out, whatever hand you give them, and they're not taking it. And those are the ones that, you know, we often turn to law enforcement to help solve that problem. They make us feel unsafe in our communities, on our trails, et cetera. We look for law enforcement to solve it. But we have to make sure as a community that we've given law enforcement the right tools. We've checked certain boxes so that law enforcement has all the tools that they need. And this is one of those boxes that we are going to have to check in some way, shape, form, or fashion. It doesn't have to be in your backyard, it doesn't have to be in my backyard necessarily. And in epiphanies, you said here, is there anything stopping us from, as a city, buying property in another city? I don't know. Let's, I'll go as out of the box as we need to go on this. But we can't just do nothing and then look up a year from now and have a room full of maybe some of the same people or other people saying, well, there's now 150 homeless, or now there's 250 homeless. And, you know, what are you going to do about that? What's chief going to do about that? So I don't support this, but we can't just pretend that we've solved the problem by not doing this. We've solved today's problem, we've solved your concerns today. Haven't solved other concerns from my business owners on Flagler that have customers being accosted by homeless people. I haven't solved that problem. I haven't solved the problem of the people sleeping in the woods on Saxon. I haven't solved the problem of the one gentleman I heard that says there's already people encamped in the same woods that we're talking about. We haven't solved any of those problems. So, you know, this isn't progress to me. So we have to continue that conversation, the oftentimes difficult conversation, and figure out how we turn this into progress. But I thank you all for coming out and being engaged and involved in the process. And I hope you feel like your voice has been heard. So that being said, as Commissioner McGurk clarified, there's a motion to adopt this ordinance. Motions are always made in the affirmative. As we vote, you'll hear us vote yes or no. A yes means they're in favor, a no means they're against. Assistant City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
No.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
No.
Commissioner Colodey?
No.
Mayor Owen?
No. Ordinance 1921 is denied, that will not be adopted. Thank you all for coming.
One more.
Enjoy your evening. Yes, we had eight B in it. Is that where you're going? All right. Let's do this, let's take a five-minute recess, if you would. It's going to be tough to have this discussion. Yes.
Is there a lot of discussion on this?
I don't know that there is, but it's just going to be hard to even hear. So let's just give it a minute while these folks clear out. We'll be back in just a couple of minutes. All right, I'm missing two commissioners. I need Commissioner Hartman. And I need Commissioner McGurk. Hey Khalid, can you look for McGurk out there? All right, drag him out here. Let's go. All right, next item up has already been read by the city attorney. So we will have a report. We're going to let Jason get tuned in here. All right. We're going to have a report by Brian. All right, here he comes, he's coming. There he is. All right, we're going to have a report by Brian, go ahead.
So with the action on the previous item, we would not recommend adopting this definition as a standalone item if there was no intent to have it as a permitted use. Instead, it could be brought back. If a permitted use is proposed, it would go with that at a later date.
Okay, so I'm hearing staff's recommendation is basically, don't move forward with this in light of what happened on the last item. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, what a change. We will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on ordinance 2421?
Motion to approve.
Second for discussion.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My only question is, why the one-year period? Kind of implies that we're putting in a long-term care facility.
It's listed as a maximum. I think the intent would be to not have it appear as a long-term facility. That could be reduced, though, to something less.
Thirty days.
And then is it 30 consecutive, or, you know? But we can address those things if it comes back before you and kind of tighten that up.
Okay, just letting that thought out there.
Okay, I'm seeing no others for discussion. Sharon, if you would, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Just for clarity, and I should have clarified. So this is the motion to adopt, staff's recommendation was not to adopt. I don't know if that, I hope that didn't get lost and confusing for you.
Are we voting on the temporary housing facility?
Yeah, creating the definition of temporary housing facility. But again, staff's recommendation was not to adopt. You're welcome to vote yes, I just want to make sure it was clear what we were voting on.
I didn't hear properly, I'm sorry.
I need a clarification. What did the motion maker want to say?
The motion was to adopt, and we had a second, and so...
Adopt is written.
Yeah, adopt is written. So to accept staff's recommendation, you would vote against. To move forward with it, you would vote for.
I'll vote against, no.
All right, so it's a no from Vice Mayor. Sharon, continue.
Commissioner Colodey?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
No.
Mayor Owen?
No. All right. Okay, now, I want to move to nine, but we've got to go back to seven. If we can just keep plowing along, that'd be great. All right, item 7A, city commission discussion regarding maximum residential dock size. Actually, I'll tell you what, we've got some staff here, they've been here for a while. We're already out of order anyway. Can we do item B real quick? Because I don't think it'll be quite as intense. And we'll get Brian maybe home at least a time to see his favorite show or something. So we're going to hear item 7B, if you all would. So let's hear from Mr. Farmer over there. He got caught behind the, the last one. I was like, why is he still here? I was like, he's really interested in this homeless thing.
He's worried about my IT skills.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw him back then, I'm like, man, he just really is taking an interest. Then I remembered. Sorry. I just don't really see anybody else here on the dock thing that I know of, maybe one.
Does the IT guy have an IT problem?
He was...
I'm relishing it.
The irony was not lost on me.
It was set up previously, the thing got unplugged.
All right.
Good evening, again. This item is something that we've been working on for quite a while with the UC. It is a proposal to start a partnership with the Utilities Commission to do a fiber network sharing agreement. Little background, in 2020, the city and the UC IT departments began exploring opportunities to work together to create efficiencies and reduce costs. One of the ones that we found was to start a fiber optic network cost-sharing partnership. Currently, the city leases network connectivity to 12 of our sites and at a yearly cost of $78,900. The UC has 9.0 miles of existing fiber that they already have available. This agreement will give city access to the existing infrastructure and authorize payment to the UC to expand to four of our 12 sites. It'll be the initial part of the program that we hope to expand. It'll be the initial part of the program that we hope to expand upon in the future. Those sites are Police Department, the City Hall and Annex, Fire Station 50 and Fire Station 51, which is also the EOC. The project cost is $152,000. $152,975.56. The five-year cost savings for not having to pay for the leased circuits at those sites is $154,500. This is an aerial shot of the parts of the network that we're going to be adding with this expansion. The first, the longest, most expensive part is from 246 to Sam's Avenue, to 210 Sam's Avenue, City Hall. And then from there to the UC's admin building on Downing Street. The next section is Fire Station 50. The UC's network goes along that street there, so it's gonna tie in a short little run there. And then the UC has a head-in facility that they have their data center at, and they're gonna pull fiber into Fire Station 51 from there. The benefits for this are increased performance, increased reliability, and reduced costs. And then, planning in the future, this, I think within the next week, or not week, I'm sorry, next month, we're gonna start planning on how we're gonna build out our portions of the network with the UC, with their master plan of the network. So, we're looking to do more things to connect more buildings, in the future, potentially parks, to be able to have network connectivity for network cameras, for future buildings, that kind of thing. One thing I forgot to do when I came up was I forgot to introduce Brandy Keen. She's in the back. She's the IT Director for the Utilities Commission.
Okay, thank you for being here. Sorry it got so late in the evening for you. UC meetings don't go that long, do they? You're like, 30 minutes and they're out of there. That's what a real meeting looks like, Tom. Brian, a couple of questions, Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Did police look like a really long run to pick up that one facility up there? Does that tie in? I couldn't really tell from that last map. Does that tie into a longer plan? Are we sure the ROI is there just for that one building? Is there a reason we'd run all the way out to pick up that one building?
So, that, right now, is our data center. That's where all of our servers are.
Got it.
That's where our phone system is.
Yeah.
So, all of those locations, all of the locations in the city go to there for server resources.
Okay, got it. Okay, because all the other ones, it's like a short little run, so it's like...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the saving was, basically, it's a five-year payoff. Is the life of this, is the, any cost that would go beyond this initial cost? Like, what's the, after the $153,000, is there an ongoing, at five years, we can expect certain maintenance costs or anything like that, or what's the...
So, are costs, there will not be any. The utility, so this will be handed over to the Utilities Commission. They will maintain it.
Okay.
As far as any costs, the lifespan of fiber is projected from 20 to 50 years, as long as it's maintained properly. And most, I think a lot of the maintenance is gonna be tree trimming to keep it from being damaged.
Okay.
And then any minor repairs to any other damage, but generally, there's not...
So, basically, it's a five-year, roughly five-year payoff, and then we've got 15 to 20 years in theory of...
Or longer.
Continued savings.
In previous networks, we've had that fiber infrastructure has lasted longer than 20 years.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Thomas? Yes.
Did this pass the UC yesterday?
It did pass the UC yesterday.
I don't approve something they've denied.
No, they approved it 5-0.
Okay.
Okay, much quicker than we did, too, probably. All right. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If no other discussion, Sharon, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. We should have done this before, so we could have had this real big win for all these people. Hey, that government really does know how to do something that makes sense.
Working together.
Yeah, like, working together with the UC, saving money over time, like, man, missed the chance, Thomas. All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Thanks. All right, item 7A now. Brian?
Yes. Commission asked us to bring back some options for discussion on docks. We are going to go straight to those options. We laid out six of them in the staff report. These are all minor variations of what we have now. Sharon, if you could please pull up that on the screen. So, option one is keep things as is, and this is the 2019 ordinance where a maximum footprint of a single-family dock, including mooring pole area and dedicated boat storage, is 1,000 square feet. Option two would be to adopt, go back and adopt, the ordinance that we proposed that got voted down a couple of months ago. And if you remember, what that did is it excluded the walkway, gangway, or access pier. And it also, we took out the mooring pole area and dedicated boat storage from that and kept it 1,000 square feet. So, kind of four additional items for consideration. Option three would be to keep our same regulation, but just increase the size from 1,000 to 1,500. Or that could be whatever number the commission set. It could be 1,200, you know, 13, just a little bit more than what we have now, to give a little bit more room to have, you know, that walkway. Option four, we call it the Commissioner Colodey's suggestion. I'd emailed.
Oh, no, sorry.
If the audience can refrain from outbursts.
This is where the maximum footprint, not including a walkway, five feet in width or less, required to extend from the shoreline to navigable waters with a depth of four feet measured at high tide. And it would also take out the inclusion of the mooring pole area and dedicated boat storage, cannot exceed 1,000 square feet. So, a more precise definition of the portion of the walkway that would be excluded from that maximum. Option five would be more of just a simple exclusion of the first 100 feet of a walkway, keeping everything else the same. And then, option six would be keep the current regulation, but only exclude the mooring pole area and boat storage area. That's the area that's a little hard to identify because it's over water. I think taking that out makes it simpler for applicants and our staff to interpret of just the hard surface of the dock area. So, that's why that was done. There are other options. I mean, we could go back to the pre-2019 rules, but I'll stop there and open for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, you know, there's some work in there. Commissioner Colodey's is interesting. Four feet at high tide. The problem would be that would mean at low tide, you could be pretty close to dry. Let me make it, let me throw something out there. The neighborhood most impacted, and I've heard most complaints about, is Venetia. Because it is so unique that the, there are canals and cul-de-sacs. What if we simply kept the 1,000 square feet maximum? Or we can reduce that if Commissioner Colodey wants. But we limited that to the Venetia neighborhood because that neighborhood is so unique to the rest of the city, that simply keeping 1,000 square feet for just the platform and excluding the walkway, it simply just makes sense. It's what's been done since the beginning of time, essentially, and there's been no problems. The only problems I'm always become aware of are those, just particularly in Venetia, because that neighborhood is so unique and how it was built on the water with canals and cul-de-sacs. So, I want to throw that out there as, you know, again, try to make this as uncomplicated as possible. The issue, I don't mind Colodey's idea. It's good. But if you put four feet at high tide, it means you can only pull your boat in and out, possibly at high tide. So, up to navigable waters, up to four feet at low tide, would seem to make more sense to me.
It'd make more sense to me, too. I think that's what I meant. I might not have wrote it. The only problem about just excluding Venetia, you do have about eight houses that are on the intercoastal.
Yeah.
And like, the one dock that was built and taken down.
But it's in Venetia.
It's in Venetia.
So, it would count to the 1,000 square foot maximum.
And they would never be able to get to deep water.
They would never be able to get there.
That's the problem. They couldn't get to deep water.
Yeah, but when you... Considering what was built? Maybe not such a bad thing, but I get you.
So, I just need to be, so you were saying, basically, put it out, I'm not sure we can yet, but let's just play it out. You're saying adopt option four for everywhere except Venetia, or everywhere, or only in Venetia? What did you say?
No, no, no. Option four is Colodey's suggestion.
Yes.
What I'm saying is, let's go back to the original idea of you remove the walkway from the 1,000 square feet period.
Okay, so option two?
Option two, but you exclude Venetia from that, and it's kept at 1,000 square feet total because that neighborhood is so unique, that's the only place where there's ever been so many problems.
So, option one for Venetia, and then option two for everywhere else, is what you're basically saying? Option one, which is current regulation for Venetia, to max of 1,000.
Right.
And then option two for everywhere else. Okay. It is a public hearing, so I'm gonna get you involved in this in just one second. I hear you want to speak. Actually, it's not a public hearing, but we're still gonna let you speak. Whatever. Yes, give me one minute. I'll come to you. Yes, sir.
But on that, with option one, you're including the mooring poles and dedicated boat storage. With option two, you're taking them out.
Yeah, we'd have to clean that up.
Yeah, I'm a little, listen, as I understand that anything, the mooring poles, the boat over the water, attached to mooring poles, don't count towards 1,000 square feet. That's good.
Yeah.
You start getting me lost in some of this detail, but my number-one goal is getting someone to be able to rebuild their dock or build their dock in a reasonable manner out to navigable water. So, I mean, Colodey's idea is good. I mean, all we gotta change is the high tide, the low tide.
And then just go up everywhere, including Venetia?
Yeah.
I think going, I don't like this whole everywhere but, you know, neighborhood X. Like, I think that's a real slippery slope that Brian and Carrie are probably both panicking over internally right now. So, I think if we can steer away from that, probably be better. I can also live with Commissioner Colodey's suggestion. I had a couple of things. But actually, I'm gonna come to the gentleman. He had a question, I think. So, if you want to approach the mic here and ask your question, we'll give you just a quick second here. This is highly unusual, but it's been one of those nights, so we'll just go with it.
I've heard it discussed that approaching the dock from the shoreline. My particular situation is I've got about 150 to 200 feet of mangroves in front of my house before the shoreline.
Okay.
And the dock would have to start on my property on the upland side of the mangroves. So, what I'm trying to figure out is if you eliminate the walkway in the 1,000 square feet, which seems to be fair, because not all docks are like...
Right.
Yeah.
Right at the seawall.
Right.
You have to go out, I have to go out almost 400 and some feet to get to navigable water.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if you had a 1,000-square-foot limit, my dock would be...
Right.
I'm a couple of two-by-eights.
Yeah, no, you've summarized, that's the issue we're trying to resolve today. That's what we've heard from other property owners, and that's what we're trying to resolve today. So, yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out. And what we're talking about is an option that would exclude the walkway in some shape, form, or fashion for exactly your type situation. So, yeah.
Okay, but on one of them, one of the options, I think, would mention from the shoreline.
Yeah, it did.
But then it includes going over the mangrove forest.
Yeah, we'll clarify that.
Okay.
What's your name and address, real quick, for the record?
Peter McCranills, 1625 South Riverside.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, my thing, I mean, it's shoreline... What is, from what the gentleman just said, what would need to be changed on option four, if anything?
You just take off, it's just your walkway. It doesn't matter where your walkway starts, essentially.
Correct.
No one's gonna create a walkway over their normal backyard. They're gonna start the walkway in the marsh or mangroves.
From where they need to start it, yeah.
So, just the walkway is excluded from the 1,000 square feet. That handles it. I mean, Colodey's, you know, I...
At high tide, if we change that to low tide, we're fine.
Change it to low tide. Yeah, because there are a lot of, there's properties on Turnbull that also require the long walkways to go down.
I want to be really clear, too. This doesn't supersede, someone can't just plow through mangroves. They get a million other regulations around mangroves. So, this isn't, we're not advocating that you can just take out mangroves. So, just before that gets posted on the next door. All right. I could be okay with option five as well. Brian, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. We have a max height in our, already, and we're comfortable with that. When we've looked at other cities and compared to other cities, we think we're okay with a max height. I know the one, the one thing that kind of got us started talking about this, you had this weird, like, bridge, you know, Wishing Bridge or whatever on it, I don't know. Would this solve that, or no?
Doesn't address that. Haven't had a lot of concerns, complaints, or...
I guess what I'm saying is, could the walkway, so it's one thing to build like a second deck that, you know, we have the rules around even the type of railing and, you know, for aesthetics. We talked about that last time. But could the entire walkway be built at that level? Do we need to have, I don't want to overcomplicate this, but do we have rules about all that stuff? Does someone have it? Even if we don't, does DEP or somebody else?
Yeah, so, in the international, intercoastal waterway, DEP has a height limit above that. So, usually, it can't be more than five feet above the mean-haw waterline for the walkway going out.
For the walkway, okay.
Now, for the one that went out there, they made an adjustment because there was a slough, and they wanted boat traffic to be able to go through the slough. So, the one that got torn down had a hump, but that was DEP's requirement for the...
Got it.
I hate to complicate it, but can DEP consult with us when they...
Well, the canals in the backwaters are ours. The intercoastal waterway is theirs.
Right. Mayor, one other quick point, just on option four. I think that it's very precise, you know, the four feet, which would be measured at low tide. We do, we can do this, and staff can implement it, no doubt. We do have a little bit of concern about how an applicant or homeowner would interpret it and what they would have to do to obtain that information, and then how our staff, our permit techs, would be able to verify that what they have matches this. So, we can make it work, I think.
The depth thing, you're meaning?
I think having something a little more precise, if you can arrive at that, might be a little easier to enforce. But again, if this is a preference, we can make it happen.
You know, I have a concern there, too, because if I build my dock and I meet these qualifications, and then I get some shoaling and stuff, you know, and then the dock gets wiped, I may not be able to rebuild because of the limitations on, and who interprets that? I mean, when you start putting that kind of particular language in things, it just creates problems down the road at some point in time.
I don't see it. I...
I do, so...
I have an application in for, to work on my dock, and they've asked me how high my dock is gonna be above the high-water level, so...
Who asked? The city or DEP?
City.
City did?
They asked me that question.
Well, I mean...
But this talks about the walkway.
If we give a, how about this? I mean, we don't need to complicate it. We can simply at low tide, you can look on any title charts, and then you can stick a ruler down there. And we, but let's give some percentage variation, so someone doesn't come and say, oh, my God, it's three feet, nine inches, I need to go out, or you went four feet, two inches. So, let's give some sort of percentage variation that's allowed, because not all low tides and high tides are the same.
Yeah.
They differ depending on the moods.
Time of year, yeah, yeah. Change by desert.
Or you go dread it before you measure.
Staff has some administrative percentages, right?
I'm not too worried about that. I think just, I'm more concerned about the applicants not understanding it or feeling like they have to hire somebody to do it. And then we would verify that, and then if years go by, maybe different people, different homeowner, different staff, might have a different way of interpreting it. But we can make it happen.
I don't want to hire somebody. Let's just...
Well, you're already requiring an engineer to sign off on them.
Yeah.
And you're requiring a survey, so you're there now. Question?
Sure.
Brian, uh, option one was the old option that we voted on. How did we get there? What caused us to get there?
We had several things. We had complaints about docks being too large. We had, we adopted, um, the Volusia County Manatee Protection Plan, which had guidelines and recommendations and things that surrounding communities were doing. So we crafted this ordinance to, to comply with what we thought was the best path forward. Probably swung that pendulum a little too far over, where we got some complaints about restrictions, especially in particular applications with environmental constraints where people couldn't build a dock. So that's why we're here to discuss it.
I'm getting into the seagrass here a little bit, but I wanna ask you, are you aware of a National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration guideline that says walkways, docks, piers, anything over the surface of the water should be five feet above the surface of the water? I'm not saying it's practical, applicable, but that is their recommendation if you wanna grow something underneath. Have you heard of this?
I've, I've heard that standard. I don't know if it's a NOAA or other just general practice. I, I have heard that.
You know, other cities around us are doing all these different things. That may be where you, where we've gotten some of these choices. Am I correct?
We looked around. We also looked at what we had and what we heard from the commission as well as residents about, you know, trying to get them to where we can protect the environment and have, you know, property rights maintained, balance that.
My concern is, number one, the environment. I mean, here we are trying to save the river, but yet we're willing to expand the footprint of docks, which science shows, and it's not disputable, that docks harm this river in particular and many water bodies. So with that in mind, how big are we gonna let these docks get? I would, I would recommend, if it's feasible, you want the walkway included, raise it up five feet and then lower it back down to water level or wherever you need it to get on a boat. It doesn't have to be from the persons, uh, 'cause I've, I've seen walkways on land and then they get to the, the tidal mark and then they go out over the water. But I'm only concerned about the walkways that we're about to omit, I believe, that are over the water. And so I wonder, is, is it not feasible? Are we, are we responding to complaints that may be warranted? You know, hopefully we'll have no hurricane and we'll never have to consider if it was left alone. But as it stands now, I, there's nothing I can see that I can support considering we voted on it last time and yeah, you got a boat that drafts four feet of water, you gotta, you may have a big problem. I, I don't see how would we come to four feet as well. What, what is that number derived from? Of draft for large boats or?
Commissioner Sachs, you have a recommendation?
Pretty much. I, one question first.
Go ahead.
We, with all these changes we're proposing, the dock area of a thousand square feet, does that include the area under a boathouse?
Yes.
Okay.
A hard roof, yes.
It was, with these changes, I just wanted to make sure that stayed in there.
If it's open water, it would be excluded.
Right. Two, two mooring poles.
If you're like taking aerial, think of an aerial photo, if it's hard surface, whether it's, if that counts.
Yes. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
So, um, all right, so to Commissioner Sachs, or Vice Mayor Sachs' point real quick. So to me, we, we have taken a very positive step for the environment. This commission took a step to protect the environment by voting for this, uh, protection. Then hearing feedback from the public, not all of whom are here tonight, but certainly many who called and talked to me, are, that they say, look, they've had to rebuild docks numerous times and they literally, I mean, you just heard from the one gentleman, they wouldn't be able to have basically any dock with this current requirement because of the walkway and navigable water thing. So, um, I, I hear you and I, I think that we have, we took a step and now we have to tune that. And we, and we knew that at the time, that we were possibly going too far. I think Commissioner McGurk even warned us about it at the time. I was anxious to make a change. I think we, I don't remember the vote, but we, you know, we obviously voted for the change. I voted against the last iteration of this, again, in support of what you are. It, it had said is making sure we don't go too far back the other way. We're trying to find the right balance. And I, I personally think it sounds like we've got, uh, support for option four from Commissioner Colode. I, I would also point out that the, this is over and above all the other, uh, regulatory agencies that are involved. So Army Corps of Engineers, DEP, State of Florida, all those other regulatory agencies, up until including DEP, we have tighter, this is gonna be tighter than actually what they're requiring. So I'm confident we're doing as much as we can practically, uh, while also balancing the needs of a residence and, and property owner, right? So, um All right.
Get your point.
So with that, um, look for a motion on, on this one. I heard a lot of traction around, uh, option four, but I'm gonna make sure we're clear on the high tide, low tide thing.
I'll make a motion to ask staff to prepare an ordinance in accordance with option number four, leaving out the word Colode and changing it to low tide.
Second for discussion, I just wanted to, again, clarify, what is the means of providing that four feet? Is it, does it, can the applicant simply just sign an affidavit, testify to the fact that they've measured it? Or do you wanna survey? Or how do we do this so it's, it's kind of reasonable for both sides?
I think we can look at that and establish a reasonable standard for our review. We, it, it can definitely happen with, without putting too much of a burden on a homeowner. There is a little bit of room for interpretation, that's all.
Okay.
So
I just didn't know if you wanted some specific interpretation, you know, putting in a dock, contrary to what Commissioner Sachs thinks, is incredibly complicated, incredibly labor-intensive and incredibly expensive, dealing with all the permitting procedures. And one of the problems is, when you keep piling on, you get people who won't do it. It's, you know, you, you, it, the incentive becomes to not do it and take a chance on getting caught because it's so overbearing and so prohibitive. And it takes a, a year, a year and a half. So I, I get what he's trying to say, but the bottom line is, I wanna make sure that someone, when they come to apply for that dock permit, we're not giving them this incredibly long, difficult process that is even more expensive than it already is. Just the proper permitting for certain floating docks costs more than the actual construction and of the floating dock. I mean, it's pretty impressive when you get into it. So, and that's not necessarily the city's fault. I mean, you've got all these different agencies you've gotta permit through. So I, as long as, I wanna make sure the city's reasonable and doesn't have some kind of special circumstance where you gotta hire a special, particular kind of person who's backed up for six months and is gonna charge you two thousand dollars because it's so unique. So I just wanna make sure that we, staff can do something reasonable.
I think, well, we'll review it, make sure we're not doing that when we bring back this ordinance and, you know, uh, also look at that term shoreline, I think, to the gentleman's point of defining that in the ordinance. So it's clear that's the start of the dock, walkway, wherever that may be. We'll, we'll clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I talked to a prominent local builder and they said, look, we get approached all the time by people that want us to come out and just don't ask questions, just build it. And they said, we, we don't do that. That's not worth risking the license for, but I, I think to your point is, your point is well made. All right, gentlemen, so that's gonna come back to us. So we're really just giving staff some direction tonight. We don't have to vote on it. It was more of just getting a sense of what's gonna come back and could possibly pass.
I just have real heartburn with putting in a, a fixed number. Because if you're going out two to three hundred feet to get to deep water, you could go three feet, four feet, five feet. Do, does the part over the three feet at, at low tide count? I mean, you're leaving things up to interpretation where it may all be clear as mud here, but five years from now, ten years from now, um, you know, you're gonna complicate the issue. Do I dredge where my dock's gonna be first to make sure I have plenty of water or what happens when it fills in?
So is your, is your suggestion then that we take off?
To the point of the oyster beds or is it all the way down to the sand? Or, I mean, how are we gonna do this? I mean, it, it just, to me, it complicates the whole problem by putting in a fixed depth.
If, if, if I wanna build a dock out to, if I have a sailboat, I wanna dock a sailboat, my draft is five and a half, six feet. Does that preclude me from doing that?
No, it would just, you wouldn't be able to exclude that portion of your walkway. So there's
Okay, so it's, 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 you're gonna exclude the first
Up to the four feet.
The walkway up to, until you get to four feet and then you can, you're gonna start on your thousand square feet?
Yes.
It's funny doing the same.
Another question.
Which may be another hundred or two hundred feet.
I hear you. I'll come to you.
Could be.
So the, the, okay, so your, your point is well made. The question is navigable waters and do we just put a period there? Which leaves a lot of room for interpretation that may be positive. But then the question is, you know, navigable water for the boat that trolled by here the other day.
Yeah, I mean, you can have a sixty, a fifty foot sport fisher that, that pulls six feet or a sailboat.
Yeah.
That pulls six or seven feet.
Yeah.
Draft, you know, and they're gonna need to be, yeah, so.
Yeah, but, but what happened when, uh, Mayor, what happened when you have, I know, uh, on Canal Calor, for example, sometimes it silt's in. So you don't have the four foots available at, at, at that's where it's supposed to be and you have to go out.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there is so many variables.
And it's like if you, if you reach a pocket of four feet, that's not navigable waters. I mean, to, to his point, that's, if you got one little trench that's four feet, but you can't get across that, that's not navigable water. So, Vice Mayor, you had a
Yes, a, a quick, important question. If, if the thought is, we build a, let's call it the ramp, the walkway, uh, if you have to build it to get out to four foot of draft, how far do you have to be from the intercoastal? Fifty feet? You could build out
It depends. I mean, if you're gonna go four foots, I mean, in some areas you might be short.
Right, there's a distance, there's a distance that you have to maintain away from the intercoastal. I think it's
Yeah.
I hope it's more than fifty feet.
Given by someone else, yeah.
And then that makes it all over the place. So are some people gonna have really long docks? You know, I look
Yeah, some people already had, that's actually the problem. You have people with three and four hundred foot docks, walkways, to get out to the river. But it's not a problem. And again, going back to the issue is, the only where, the only, ironically, you know, the only neighborhood it's ever been a problem is in Venetia because of the unique way that the property has canals and cul-de-sacs on the water. So.
I had one other question, Brian, I forgot to ask earlier. Uh, we have no grandfathering. He's got distracted. Brian, we have no grandfathering provision in this, right? This would be applicable, so if somebody had something today, gets wiped out by a hurricane tomorrow, this rule would apply to whatever they wanna rebuild, whatever we decide on tonight.
A complete rebuild, yes.
For a complete rebuild, yeah. I could personally support a grandfathering provision because I, I think that would help alleviate, like, this is controlling new. And then if something is already there and it gets wiped out, you know, to me, that kind of cleans up probably most of the cases we're worried about. The docks have already been built. I just don't wanna preclude that person from putting back in what's, you know, what's there. Maybe with some women on that, I don't know.
No, you make a good point because there's a lot of people who have built something and it's of value to the property and then it, it washes away or let's not, everything has to be replaced after a certain amount of time anyway. These docks don't last in perpetuity. So the reality of it is, then people are gonna have to conform to this and then you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna come back to the commission. We probably won't be up here, hopefully.
You don't want exceptions, nothing I want.
But
So grandfathering doesn't sound like a terrible idea. If you're, if you have a dock that's the point is, we're trying to, again, we're trying to save the river from toxic chemicals in the wood, from plants, uh, the bottom not getting plants, from turbidity, from scouring, from all these ills of the docks and the unsightliness, unfortunately. Some people don't like the look of docks. Without harming our residents, can we bring something forward for, for the
Brian, what are your thoughts on the grandfathering?
I like that idea. We, we can have it in the ordinance that, as long as we, we're clear about what will be allowed to be rebuilt.
Is it permitted docks or unpermitted docks? If it was just there and it's grandfathered in? If it was built in Edgewater and we annex it or
They, they will have to document it.
Existing at the time of adoption.
He just whips off his dad joke, that just kills me.
Just an FYI, Edgewater has an eight hun- Edgewater has an eight hundred foot maximum with no limit, and the dock, and the pier, uh, sorry, the walkway, the gangway is excluded.
We need to kiss this.
Yes, that's great. Yeah.
No, I'm just saying, it's different everywhere.
Jake, come, I'm not understa-, you, give us something to, tangible to go on. I, that's great.
What's tangible for me?
I can do, exclude the walkway. That's my whole point. That's where I started with this thing.
So the difference in, so Edgewater, the difference in Edgewater's and ours is they have two hundred square feet less. But they don't have, at least not in the little summary we have, they don't have the, this note, they don't really define. So let me, let me ask you this. So we're trying to just give staff some direction. I, I'd love to see my family tonight at some point in my life. So can, we've given you some direction. We're a little hung up as a commission. We probably won't figure it out tonight. I think Commissioner Arndt has raised some valid points. How do you define navigable waterways? Some other city up and down our coast has, has got this figured out. So I would say, can staff come back to us with, you've heard the general consensus, we're okay with excluding walkways. We want some kind of regulation around this, but we gotta figure out how we define this navigable water. And so can you look to Edgewater, Pott, somebody else and figure out if they've got something that you think would be palatable? And either bring that back in ordinance form or one more discussion round if, if needed, if you don't figure, if you think it's still quite controversial.
We can do that. We'll look at others. I think I've heard, the, the, the goal is, look for somebody to demonstrate need to have a walkway to a certain location.
That's kind of where I think we're at, yeah.
Yeah, so, and let's not, I mean, preclude the idea that let's just allow the walkway and then have the thousand square feet. I mean, that is, to me, the, the easiest way to solve that. It's not perfect, but it's the easiest. And if you can, if staff can bring back something else, that they say, hey, look, we think we put together something that kind of covers all the bases here, that's great, too.
And so allow the walkway and basically the outer limit on that is, you just can't bump into there's, there's rules about you can't go into the intercoastal, et cetera. Is that
Yeah, but that's not controlled by us anyway.
That's what I'm saying. You're saying just get out of the
Let's go back to the easy thing is, the walkway is not, is excluded and you have a thousand square foot, a thousand square foot platform. So that, to me, is the standard. Now, if we wanna try to finesse something, to do something that is even better, that's great. But kind of starting with Colode did, but let's at least have two, two solutions and then get it done.
Okay.
Yes. On the issue of navigable waterway.
Yes.
Army Corps of Engineers has a very broad definition, so I don't think we wanna go that way. But look it up, see if they've changed it.
Yeah, 'cause again, I mean, navigable is, you know, again, we just saw
They don't consider that navigable.
Twenty foot sailboat has a six foot draft.
Yeah. Okay.
But he's a seven.
There you go.
What is that?
A friend of mine, his draft is seven feet.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you just gotta buy a house that is on deep water then, I guess. And at some point, we, it's like, again, I can't accommodate for that boat that floated by, I can't accommodate that for, in Venetia. Like, it's just not
And he's homeless.
At some point, it's compatibility. And he's homeless, is that what you said?
Yeah, 'cause he only has a boat.
I thought you said it was your neighbor.
No, I said a friend of mine.
Oh.
So he doesn't have a, so he's, he lives on a boat, so he's homeless, right?
We're gonna build a shelter for him.
We do have some of them, by the way.
Waterford, out on Glencoe, across the street from Waterford. Uh, you gotta laugh, guys. All right. Uh, Brian, do you have any idea where you're going from here?
Yes, so I'm, I'm hearing that two is the preference, but to look at the precision that's in four and see if we can incorporate that to put some type of cap on the amount of the walkway that would be excluded based on actual conditions and need. and see if we can incorporate that to put some type of cap on the amount of the walkway that would be excluded based on actual conditions and need.
Yeah, so basically some blend between two and four. Like, four if you can get there, but two if not, is kind of what I'm, what I'm hearing. Yep.
We have a motion. What did we do?
It's not, it's not a motion.
No, I think, did we make a motion? Didn't, colodi, we have a motion in a second. I'm going to withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, we don't really, we're just giving staff direction. We don't have anything to make a motion on. It's just direction. All right. Gentlemen, thank you for that. Thank you, sir, for being here. Is that Dr. Adams back there too? I see, can't tell. No, maybe not. All right. Gentlemen, I think we're up to ordinance's first readings. That we, we bounced around all night. Are we there?
Yep.
Okay, item nine A.
Ordinance number 2621, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, 2.5 plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Arena Drive West of Cone Lake Drive, addressed as 255 Arena Drive, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone Four, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be June 8, 2021. Ordinance number 2721, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of 2.5 plus or minus acres of land located on the north side of Arena Drive, west of Cone Lake Drive, addressed as 2555 Arena Drive, from Volusia County Rural to City Rural, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date. Ordinance number, second reading and public hearing will be June 8, 2021. Ordinance number 2821, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning 2.5 plus or minus acres of property located on the north side of Arena Drive, west of Cone Lake Drive, addressed as 2555 Arena Drive, from Volusia County RA Rural Agriculture to City RA Rural Agriculture zoning district, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Second reading and public hearing will be June 8, 2021.
Okay. I think Randy Hartman just left it yet. All right, next item up, Mayor, and we have no boards and commissions, nothing shared. Excellent job tonight, Sharon, we appreciate it. Thank you for filling in for Kelly. You've done well. Eight B we did a long time ago. Sorry, you missed it. It was so fast. We did nothing.
Denied.
We pulled it because we wanted it, it basically went in conjunction with the other one. Yep, no, no problem. It's now turned into a classroom. We can read. All right, Mayor and Commission reports. We'll begin with the Vice Mayor as always. Sir, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to add on to a very nice presentation given by Shannon Murphy. Shannon is a member of the Audubon Society. I had an ex parte, a really nice meeting with her and Joyce Riddle from the association. What they would like to do is save the planet. It's not just about looking at birds and bees and really nice critters out there. It's saving our environment. What we're doing is we're urbanizing our environment with St. Augustine and asphalt. So what they're asking, and what their final message is, we would like our cities to be sustainable with Florida native plants that don't take too much water, they don't take fertilizer which pollutes, they don't take other toxic chemicals. What they're asking to do, and I fully support the idea, we, we hopefully have some open space in the city, maybe in some of our parks. If we could dedicate some of that open land, and I know that in the Indian River Lagoon Preserve, we were given permission to start an initiative, you know, the groups that adopt the parks are allowed to landscape. They're allowed to bring in flowers and improve the parks. So what I would like to do is offer first, the Indian River Lagoon Preserve Park has a few small parcels in the parking area. If they could show a kind of representative garden of Florida native plants, which don't take any water. Once you plant them, they're self-sustaining, they're beautiful, they attract the birds, the bees. Insects are essential to our environment. We got to admit it, it's true. We, we're now, even in my own yard, we've gone to Florida native plants. Almost two thirds of our yard is Florida native. You would not believe the amount of birds, bees, and I'm talking honeybees. Honeybees are dying by the billions and all over the world, I, I'm not going to speak this to what's killing them, but they're dying. But I'm seeing them in my yard, okay? So these are the little things that will keep New Smyrna a great place. We're an ecotourist destination. If people see that kind of thing and see people doing it, see the city as, as a good example. I'd like to support the Audubon Society, Shannon and her colleague Joyce, and let's, let's try and go forward with this. Their ultimate goal is to try to convince, this is a tough, a tough ask, to try to convince developers to use Florida natives in their landscaping. I know one very responsible developer is doing that, trying to keep as much of the natural flora as possible. And if they, if we can get them to do that, we'll save a lot of water for drinking and have a more sustainable city. So I don't know if.
Okay, so what exactly? Give me something specific. And it sounds good, but give me something specific.
Well, we would have to get together and discuss with staff if you, if you would agree.
So have you talked to staff yet? Do they have any concerns or?
They have spoken, they have actually dealt with Faith Miller on subs, a few initiatives.
You haven't talked to Kyle yet and about your, okay. So I'd say, I don't think I have any issues with it, but talk to Kyle, let staff talk to them and figure out if there's, you know, exactly what it would look like, if there's any costs that would have to be carried by us, if there's any other concerns. But I can't see this commission having an issue with that initiative, especially if it's at no cost to us. Even if it were at a small cost, we might, could support it, but definitely at no cost. And I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we have a requirement on our LDRs about a certain percent of landscaping has to be native? Or did I just dream that up sometime?
Yes, that isn't there. We are looking at the landscape code to update it, so that is something that a lot of cities have. Ours is a little behind on that requirement.
We.
We do have a requirement though.
We do have a requirement, but we could probably enhance that. We do have something, so we're not completely, we haven't completely ignored this, but we can always do better, so.
Good, very good.
I'd say work with staff, maybe a joint meeting with you, Kyle, and the representative there. And thank you for being here tonight and staying for the entire meeting. I forget.
And if the person would like to, if she would like to reach out to us, I think that would be great. Give us an idea of what they're doing, what they're up to. I'd certainly like to speak with her and, 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 and reach out and love to hear what you're up to. Be great.
Yeah.
And just to cook mention, sorry, gentlemen, affordable housing. I understand that we, there may have been some discussions with Habitat for Humanity about affordable housing. If we could find parcels somewhere in the city of vacant land that we're not using, we could turn them into affordable housing. I'm not sure how Commissioner Hartman feels about that. We might support it. Habitat for Humanity. If we had the land and they can build the homes.
I thought we talked about this last meeting and we were going to have a small workshop on it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I felt like we did just talk about it, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm saying it again.
Okay. Anything else?
Let's see, do I have anything else? No, I'll spare you. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner McGurk.
No, I don't think I have anything to say. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hartman.
So what was it, last Friday, Friday before last, we went to a swearing in or penning of a new officer? He's a nineteen year old child, basically. It was amazing to see the support that he had from his family and the other, and some other friends. And even, he went through an explorer program, you know, where the high school kids go, you know, police and fire and go through that process. So it was amazing to see that. It's encouraging, given what's happening in today's world, that you actually find someone that young that truly wants to go that route and make that commitment. So we wish him best. I wish him the best and I hope he goes to a full retirement, maybe be chief one day. The other thing was Saturday, we went to the part of the community day over at Pettis Park. It was a great turnout. Irma did a wonderful job as always. There were a lot, quite a few vendors over there, quite a few volunteer support staff over there. There was, I talked to a few of the vendors, they were happy. Everybody wants to see more people, more, you know, turnout, especially if you're a vendor, but they were happy with the turnout that they did have. There was a lot of communications, there was a lot of talk, and Pastor Pete was there with his complaints. So, but they were all, most of them were favorable. So it was a really good turnout. It was well received, I thought, so it was a pretty good time. A lot of people, not only with that event, but were also in the park, enjoying the park, you know, the playground equipment, the tables and stuff like that. So it was good to see that, the community out and being actually involved and active in the park. So I appreciate that. That's a lap.
Commissioner Colodi.
No comments.
All right. Bob, is that your yeti?
Yeah.
Ah, all right. I knew somebody left a yeti. I was hoping they'd remember it.
I had my eyes on it.
We were going to lost and found it for you. I also have, well, I mean, I have one comment. I just, you know, we had a good turnout tonight, good crowd tonight. I think we listened to the public. I think we made the right decision, but I want to reiterate, we didn't really solve any problem. We solved the problem we'd created, which is proposing something in an area that wasn't ideal. But we, we still can't just rest that we, you know, pat ourselves on the back and say, hey, that felt really good to, to, you know, do what the majority in the, in the crowd wanted because at the end of the day, we, we're still going to get the complaints from people. We're still going to have the issues that we're having. So I don't have answers. I heard some good things from some people. I had some, as you all probably did as well, some sidebar conversations afterwards. You know, I'm going to continue to work on this issue. I'm going to continue to hopefully, you know, have staff work on this. I don't think it goes away. I think we have to continue doing something, figuring out what that is, what that approach is. We have to be potager compliant. I think that is a box we have to check in this city by hook or by crook. So I'm going to, you know, look high and low, figure out what other options we can, we can give to staff because I can't, we can't continue to ask staff to solve a problem and then not give them the tools to do it. It'd be like asking someone to, you know, I don't know, do, do something and then not give them the right tool to do it. So hopefully we won't lose sight of that broader goal. But I do think maybe a lesson was learned tonight in that we, we have to, if we're going to do something, especially as controversial, you know, we've got a few controversial lightning rod issues in our community. And if we're going to touch those, if we're going to even start talking about them, the lesson I took away from tonight was, in the past two, two weeks, we've really got to have our ducks in a row. Staff, commission, we got to be on the same page. We got to have, you know, we have to have answered every question, be ready for every myth, be every, be ready for every concern and all those things. Like, we got to have the data, we got to have the plan, we got to be, we got to have the exit track. We got to have all that hammered out. And I felt like tonight, we kind of came out and, and, and got, got kind of sheltered in front of the firing squad without any of, of that information. So I'm hoping we can avoid that in the, in the future on items such as that. I did miss the heart of the community day. Woke up that day with a massive migraine headache and was in bed the entire day, which was not as fun as, I was looking forward to playing some basketball, but I did miss being there, so. All right, city manager report, any.
You have the reports before yourself. If there's any questions on the report, the only thing is I just want to add one item. I discussed with you during the briefings about the change, changes in parks policy and the sports complex. As I mentioned during the briefing, that currently the, the policy for parks, you're allowed to have pets with leech. We don't want any pets inside the fence area. It's actually in the court of ordinance, you allow, the city managers allow to, to do the changes with the commission blessing. And we'll come back and do the changes on the court of ordinance at a later date. So I'm asking the commission to bless no pets within the fence area of the sports complex.
Any concerns with that? Hearing none? Yes.
I just was going to get a motion and a vote so that it's in our summary of action.
Okay, you had a motion to support the city manager proposal.
I make that motion.
Park rules at the sports complex.
Second.
And a motion ahead of second, city assistant city clerk.
Commissioner Colodi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
Yes.
And the mayor, I'll take a positive out of this meeting today because imagine if we do all the work and we end up with this meeting.
Yeah.
So I take that as a positive. So I don't think, you know, initially, we thought maybe we put the cart before the horse. But I think it turned out where you could see, there is no place in New Smyrna that you're going to find, that you're not going to have disopposition unless if you go to the moon, and I mentioned to you that, and I think NASA will complain about that, so.
So I genuinely think, like, what's to stop us from buying a parcel of property somewhere else? Just go to some other town, buy a piece of dirt and build it.
And by the way, I have heard from, I have heard from the city of the land on using the, the bridge. They would not be able to do that.
Yeah, of course.
The first step, and I'm not sure if these numbers are correct, but it looks like it's about fifty-six, between fifty-six to fifty-seven thousand dollars if New Smyrna's using it. I have to confirm the number tomorrow just to make sure that this is the right number. So anyway, on the, hopefully on the 22nd, I will have a full operating cost, construction cost, and also the other options available.
Okay. Sharon, anything to report?
No, report from the clerk's office.
Okay, city attorney.
No report.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.